This is a December 21st, 2021 Town of Corder Madera Town Council meeting. Happy holidays to everybody. And with that Rebecca, can we get a roll call please?
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Mangan.
Here.
Councilmember Ravazia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Here.
America Sisa.
Here. And with that, if we can salute the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and justice for all. Okay. With that, we're going to go ahead and open up the meeting for public comment. This gives the public an opportunity to comment on anything as long as it's not on our agenda, which will open up public comment at that time for those agenda items. And with that, if you'd like to, please raise your hand. And I see one hand raised so far, which is Roy Wolford.
Okay, Roy, I am unmuteing you.
Good evening, everyone. Roy Wolford wanted to cover the PG&E underground survey. I completed it. Seems it was in search of who's willing to pay for infrastructure. So it did not cover what happens in flood-prone areas, what happens in other utility lines such as cable and phone on the poles, do they go underground? What about transformers? Anyone get a big buzzing transformer in their front yard? A number of questions covered. How much are you willing to pay to prevent various durations of outage? And this is kind of where I got the infrastructure piece from and an article I read that I'm going to cover in a minute. You know, there should be, there should have been some questions, maybe, how do we prevent permanent outages? So in an article I had read, it was about the PUC. PUC California criticized solar net metering in the state as being a multi-billion dollar subsidiary for rich homeowners and claim that utility rate payers are funding this. So yeah, that's absolute nonsense. Now, what the proposal is, they want to charge $8 per kilowatt solar proposal, and that's going to punish the homeowners. And they want to do this in the name of equity. We're hearing a lot about equity. You know, they're punishing the homeowners for using clean energy. Now, this proposal by the PUC is AB 1139, which was earlier this year, on steroids. And so the PUC wants to charge for the kilowatt rating. They want to reduce the amount of money the solar homeowners get for returning electricity to the grid, and they want to cut down significantly the rebates. So you know, what is all the cause of the high prices for energy and that sort of thing? It's very bad policy and incompetent policymakers. Electricity is not being generated where and when in the location most preferred by these folks. They want everyone to install solar batteries so they don't turn as, return as much electricity to the grid. And what's fueling all this? Well, how about closing down nuclear power plants? San Onofre Nuclear Power Plant was closed down in 2013, and it generated 8% to 11% of the state's electricity. 1,100 megawatts of power, poof, gone. Diablo Canyon, the only remaining nuclear power facility, has two or powered plants, closing down in 2024. 2,256 megawatts of power, poof, gone. Dams are being poured down. Gavin Newsom is working at tearing down dams, reducing hydroelectric generation, eliminating natural gas. The major, the major impact that we're going to see is baseload electric generation, more power outages, and higher energy costs, and on and on. And I have a lot more to say on this. It's a complex issue, but it costs a quarter of a million dollars for somebody to go completely solar renewable.
Hey, Roy. Unfortunately, that's, that's your three minutes, unfortunately. We appreciate your comments. Thanks.
Certainly.
If you does want to email a lengthier public comment, we can include that with the late correspondence received on the council agenda packet online.
Okay, thanks Rebecca. And we have another hand raised, and I cannot pronounce names, so I apologize. And after that, we'll have Pat Ravazio.
Yes, the next person I will call is Lisa Yay. Lisa, are you able to mute yourself?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Really appreciate the opportunity to attend the council meeting. I'm Lisa Yay, especially event coordinator of San Francisco Fire and Buddha Association. We are the local center of Shengyan Performing Arts. The Shengyan is coming back to Bay Area, so we do hope to invite you and your families to see the Shengyan show. Apply for a tribute letter from the whole city council, the town council. And because this is the Shengyan's 15th anniversary, so we do hope to, to be supported by all of you, because the Shengyan is so wonderful. I, maybe I can give you some sample. We have got the special congress, certificate of special congressional recognition from Congressman Roel Kenna and Hoffman. And also, we have got the joint members restitution number 19 from California senators and assembly members. We have got legislative certificate of recognition from Iowa Senate. We have got a legislative citation from Alaska House and Senate, and also a legislative citation from Kentucky House. And not only that, we are supported by a lot of congressmen and congresswomen. I've talked about it, including this House Speaker Nancy Pelosi, and quite a lot of others. And a lot of governors support us too, with the proclamation letter or welcome letter, including governors in Alaska, Iowa, Nebraska, North Dakota, Utah, Kentucky, and New Mexico, and some others. So that's why I'm trying to convince you that Shengyan Performing Arts is really a wonderful show. And maybe I can brief you about about four special features. The first one is Shengyan has a limited 3D backdrop. So when the dancer performed there, the backdrop would change to match with the color, the costume, and the story. Every dancer says story, sometimes just like Buddha, Buddha coming down from the heaven and dance on the stage. So that's really amazing. And the 3D backdrop has a pattern. This is the only one backdrop has a pattern in the world. So it's really amazing. The second special feature is Shengyan has a live orchestra to combine the Chinese traditional instrument together with the western instrument. So this is the only one in the world can do that. Because, for example, China has arhoo, pipa, and so on. Now, the arhoo has more than 2,000 years of culture. So the music is so amazing. And the third special feature is Shengyan has a, Shengyan use the traditional vocal method in the high range, and that method has been lost in east and west. So I think that's really amazing. So thanks for your consideration. Thank you.
Wonderful day. Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Next up, we have Pat, followed by Phyllis.
Thank you. I will unmute Pat. And I just wanted to say that we did receive a lengthier email from Lisa that will be sent to council and uploaded to the website. And Pat Ravazio, you are being unmuted. Pat, are you able to speak?
Yes, I think so. Thank you. Just wanted to sort of echo what Roy Wolford said. We don't always agree on things, but I have been watching and seeing that PG&E and the Public Utility Commission are doing a major strangulation move on home solar. And I know that you guys don't have a ton of influence in that area, so that's why it's not on our agenda to talk about things like this. But any influence that you do have or can have in your, in your conversations with PG&E, there should be a lot of outrage right now. But the issue is so complicated that people don't know enough to get outraged anymore, because they have to dig way deep and to understand what's really going on. So we do need to get control of this energy situation. But I do agree that we need to shut down nuclear power. We don't need that. And we also need to end this absolute crazy fascination we have with so-called natural gas. We do know now that it is a major contributor to these high parts per million numbers that we have of carbon. And it's because methane is 20 times stronger than carbon in terms of its ability to be a greenhouse gas and create heating. And the fact is that in methane, natural gas production, the amount of methane released during fracking is huge. So we've got to get off the gas. I heard a oil executive being interviewed the other day who said he can't believe people are stupid enough to believe that we can really heat up the outside. All those natural gas fancy little things for eye candy, for a little bit of warmth, multiply it times cities all over the world celebrating Christmas, and we are just killing the planet. So anything you guys can do to help to get electrification only and new construction, we got to get off the gas. It's like the thing that's, that's doing more harm than anything else. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Appreciate your comments. Next up, we have Phyllis.
Phyllis, are you able to mute?
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I wanted to talk about the redistricting that just took place, not only at the state level and the Congress, but for our county. The Board of Supervisors were charged after the 2020 census to redraw their boundaries so there would be an equal population as close as possible in each district. Dennis Redoni will remain our supervisor, which is fine, because he's a hardworking supervisor. What isn't fine is that once again, we are not in the same district with Larkspur. One of the things that they look for in putting together the districts under federal law is communities of interest. And we certainly have a lot of interests, our town with Larkspur. We share a police department, a fire department, a school district, et cetera. Instead, we are in a district with West Marin and Northwestern Nevada, both of which and part of San Rafael. It's the canal area now. There's always been a part of the canal area. There's now the total canal area so that that community of interest can be together, which is fine. But we have been used time after time as the fill-in. And I, I know some people wrote letters, but unfortunately, letters didn't come from the council requesting that we would somehow be linked with Larkspur. So for the next 10 years, we once again will not be. And I kind of agree with Brad Breithaupt in explaining this in the IJ editorial. This district is an amoeba. So I just want to be sure everybody was aware of it. And it's something to think of for the future, even though it's now another 10 years. But it shouldn't happen again. Thank you.
Thanks, Phyllis. I do not see any more hands raised. Rebecca, do we get any public comments via email?
Thank you, America Sisa. Yes, we did receive an emailed public comment from someone who couldn't attend this evening. Let me start the timer. And it is from Jim Jordan, who says, James Jordan's statement to Corder Madera Town Council, "Season's greetings. I regret that I cannot personally make this statement to you tonight, because I have a prior commitment at this time. I recently learned that the town government is actively considering a proposal to install artificial turf on the main soccer field in town park. I respectfully request that the town council decide tonight to suspend the process that is being used to consider this proposal and postpone the two public meetings that are scheduled by the Parks and Recreation Department on January 7th and 8th, 2022. This request is based on information that is presently available that causes me to suspect that a small group of moneyed and politically influential persons are being allowed to manipulate the decision-making process to reach a predetermined outcome of installing artificial turf on the main soccer field in the town park. The following considerations support my conclusion. The town survey that is the basis of the master plan development process showed that 81% of households are satisfied or very satisfied with park athletic fields. The town survey did not identify installing artificial turf on the main soccer field in the town park as a primary need. Only 16.7% of households identified all-weather artificial turf fields as a need in town that is being met less than 50%. That is rank number 20 on listed needs that are not being met. The Parks and Recreation Department has not followed the process or met the timeframes in the schedule in its Parks and Recreation Master Plan process timeline. The community engagement workshop scheduled for September to November 2021 have not yet occurred. The prioritization and feasibility assessment scheduled for November 2021 to January 2022 has not yet occurred. The budget development scheduled for January to March 2022 cannot happen until the previous steps have been completed. These dates should be rescheduled in 2022 to allow adequate time for each phase of the process. I have heard that the proponents of installing an artificial turf soccer field in the town park have had ongoing communications with town staff. That allows them to know what is happening and arrange to have a showing of support at the public meetings on January 7th and 8th, 2022. During that same time, the town government has not provided any information to the more than 95% of town residents who have not been informed about the proposal to install an artificial turf soccer field. Residents cannot participate fully or fairly in the decision-making process if the town has told them nothing about the details of the proposal. Scheduling only two delayed public meetings on back-to-back dates in early January 2022 ensures that there will be minimal public participation, because those dates are shortly after the winter holidays break. That is when residents will be busy going back to work and back to school and preparing for the big wave of COVID Omicron virus that is predicted to arrive about then. The community engagement workshops that were scheduled to occur over two or three months in the master plan process timeline cannot be completed in only two days. The Parks and Recreation Department should not be allowed to fail to complete the steps in the plan process in a timely way, and then jam two or more months of promised public engagement into only two days of two-hour meetings. My time is up, and there are still several paragraphs left, and this letter will be uploaded to the late correspondence on the town website and linked on, on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, and I was gonna say I will forward it to town council when, when it is available on the town website for the public viewing as well.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments via email?
Let me double check. But no, I don't believe any additional emailed public comments were received.
Okay, and we have no more hands raised, so I will go ahead and close public comment. We do not have any presentations tonight, so I'll go ahead and move to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine in nature. They've been previously discussed and don't require any further discussion. They can't be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council staff or public may have an item pulled for further discussion. With that is, with that, is there anybody from the public that wishes to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing no hands raised, do we have any emails that came in regarding the consent calendar?
We did not receive any emails, public comments, and consent calendar items.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to town council for discussion and/or possible motion. Yeah, Eli.
I would move items 4A through 4J.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thanks, Bob. If there's no further discussion, go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Mangan.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Yes.
America Sisa.
Yes. Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and move to 5A, which is public hearings. We only have one tonight, and it's regarding a proposed ordinance amending a change with respect to a veterinarian office permitted use in C3 Highway Commercial Zone District. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tracy, who's going to give the staff report. The applicant also, we're going to give him five minutes after Tracy gets through with her report also for a presentation. So Tracy, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I do have some slides tonight. A moment, share my screen.
Lucy, while you're sharing the screen, let me know if I should move the applicants over to the panelist side, or if they will just be making public comments with raised hands.
Maybe at the end of my presentation, so allow the council to have a face with the name. And good evening, Mayor Sisa and Vice Mayor Lee and council members. My name is Tracy Haggerty. I'm an assistant planner here at the town. And this is an application to amend the town's zoning ordinance to add veterinarian offices, uses as permitted use in the C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District. The application was initiated by the owner of 200 Nellan Avenue. The property owner would like to lease the vacant lower-level tenant retail space at 200 Nellan to a veterinarian office, Larkspur Landing Veterinary Hospital. And 200 Nellan Avenue is zoned C3 Highway Commercial, and veterinarians' offices are neither a permitted use nor a conditionally permitted use within C3. And, and so this application would require an amendment to require a change to our zoning code. And a little more background, in 2017, the Planning Commission approved the construction of the new mixed-use commercial building at 200 Nellan Avenue. It was completed in 2020, and the anticipated uses at that time were office and retail. And the second floor is occupied by the owner's administrative offices, and the retail tenant spaces on the lower level are vacant. And obviously, the immediate effect of this ordinance is that the vet office would be allowed to operate at 200 Nellan Avenue. Of course, the zoning ordinance amendment is not specific solely to 200 Nellan Avenue. It would add veterinarian offices as a permitted use for all parcels that are zoned C3 Highway Commercial. This is a map of the affected parcels. There's approximately 20 properties that are zoned C3 Highway Commercial, all in close proximity to 101. Those parcels are the dark orange with the yellow outline to the north and to sort of the middle of Corder Madera. And the proposed amendments would apply to all parcels that are zoned C3. And Municipal Code Section 1812020 sets forth a wide variety of uses that are permitted or that are conditionally permitted in the four commercial districts. This section allows veterinarians as a permitted use only in the C4 Commercial Service District. Veterinarians are neither permitted nor conditionally permitted in C1 Local Shopping, C2 Regional Shopping, or C3 Highway Commercial. And permitted uses in C4, which includes veterinarians, these include land-intensive and almost industrial uses. Some examples are shown on this slide, automobile sales and service, contractors, equipment, rental yards, et cetera, are some examples. And many of these uses, including veterinarians' offices, have been a permitted use in C4 since the adoption of the town's zoning ordinance in 1958. And at that time, these types of commercial service establishments were referred to as semi-industrial in character. And the, the C3 district, similar to C4, also includes some semi-industrial uses that are the same or similar to those in C4. Those uses are listed on the left-hand side of this slide. But C3 differs from C4 in that it also includes uses that are commonly smaller scale in service and retail-oriented nature. And those are on the right-hand columns, some examples of those types of uses. They serve categories of patrons that align more closely with service and retail type of establishments that, that are also permitted uses in the C2 and the C1 zoning district. And, and these are not all of the uses that are allowed in C3 Attachment 3 to the staff report, I believe, Attachment 3 includes a list of all of the permitted and conditionally permitted uses in C3. And maybe many of you know, a present, present-day veterinarian office is not agricultural or industrial in nature, and doesn't require extensive land or outdoor areas, for instance, that maybe were associated historically with veterinarians when the town originally considered zone classification for this use. And additionally, veterinarians per our use description must operate within an enclosed building, and only short-term boarding of animals is allowed. On this slides and the next few slides, I'll show some examples of veterinarian offices that serve Central and Southern Marin. And, you know, similar to other permitted uses in C3, a vet's office is local and regional serving benefits from convenient access to the freeway. And its characters and scale is comparable to the personal service and retail type of establishments allowed by right in C3. These all are veterinarian offices located close to the freeway. Mill Valley on the left, Larkspur on the right, excuse me. The existing vet in Corder Madera on Paradise Drive is shown on the left. And familiar to some of you, the Pet Emergency and Specialty Center in San Rafael. And one more example also in San Rafael on Francisco Boulevard. Shown here is the proposed amendment to chapter, to section 18.12.020. Shown in blue or underlined is the added text with the X here under C3 indicating veterinarians' offices permitted use. Red strikeout is deleted text. And you'll note that the proposed ordinance would remove a part of the existing use description that requires the Planning Commission review or determine soundproof construction materials for a vet's office. And the reason for this change is that operation of a permitted use is not subject to discretionary review. And therefore, it's not, and it has not been feasible for the Planning Commission to truly get involved and prescribe those soundproof construction specifications on a, on a case-by-case basis for any vet office that operates in an existing building. And any need for sound attenuation materials or methods for an existing or a proposed vet office should be handled at the landlord/tenant level and during the tenant improvement process. And it, the use description would retain the requirement that operations are conducted entirely within an enclosed building, and that only the short-term boarding of animals is allowed. There is an amendment, proposed amendment to the Purpose Section for C4, which gives an example of veterinarians being exemplary of the C4 district. Again, the added text is shown in underline and deleted and strikeout. And, and since veterinarians are simply just not exemplary solely of this zoning district with the proposed amendment, and it's not really a good example of the land-intensive, larger-scale uses, such as automobile dealers and building material sales and home improvement sales that are, are listed as examples in this, in this section. There are specific findings that are required in order to add a permitted or conditionally used to the list of those prescribed for any zoning district. And you can find analysis of those findings in sections, section six of the draft ordinance, that's, that's attachment one, and, or the Planning Commission resolution that's recommending approval, which is attachment two. And staff is recommending that the town council introduce the proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 18.12. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you have. The property owner of 200 Nellan, Sebastian Jacobits, and his prospective tenant, Dr. Mary Press, of Larkspur Lanning Veterinary Hospital, are also on this call and would appreciate the opportunity to make a few remarks at the appropriate time, and, and also answer any questions that you might have for them.
Tracy, why don't we do this? Why don't we go ahead and let the applicant take their five minutes now, and then we can hear them, and then we'll go back to council for questions.
Great.
Okay.
And that was Sebastian, Rebecca, and Mary Press.
Sebastian and Mary, you are being moved to panelist, and you're welcome to accept that invitation and share your camera if you would like.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor Sisa, council members, Vice Mayor Lee. My name is Sebastian Jacobics. My family and I developed 200 Nellan. We also own Fitness SF. That's our primary business. We occupy the top floor of 200 Nellan as our family corporate offices. We finished that project just as COVID was beginning. And as we all know, leasing operations really froze up for over a year in and about all retail areas. This last year, we've been actively trying to lease the property out. And to our surprise, many veterinarians were interested in leasing the space. There's definitely a need for additional veterinary services within our local area in Corder Madera and Larkspur. And we contacted Dr. Press, who we also use for our, our dog, our family pet, our extended family member, Nova. And we were surprised when we reached out to planning that this was not an approved use, whether conditional or permitted. Pet sales, pet grooming, pet boarding are all allowed in C. pet boarding are all allowed in C3. All other medical uses, human medical uses, whether they be optometry or dentistry or other medical offices, plastic surgery all allowed in C3, but a vet use was not. So we reached out to the town and made this application to amend the zoning. We feel that it's an appropriate use. Dr. Press will comment specifically about her operations. But she's a local vet, has been operating out of that location since 1978. And she intends to move. Actually, she's forced to move out of the Marin Country Mark Shopping Center. And so I'm here to answer any questions. And the planning commission did hear our presentation and agreed unanimously to support the zoning amendment as town staff is also supporting it. That concludes my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary, did you want to say a few words also? I think you're on mute.
Hi.
Hi.
Hey, I'm Mary Press. We're applying to include veterinary services as permitted in the C3 zoning district. As Sebastian said, pet sales, grooming, boarding and human medical practices are currently allowed. So veterinary medicine should easily fit into the zoning. Small animal medicine has evolved into a sophisticated service for family members. The demand for veterinary service for family pets has grown tremendously. And this zoning change will directly allow Corder Madera to provide veterinary medicine for its citizens' pets. I've owned Larkspur Lanning Vet Hospital for 26 years. I've been awarded the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce Business Citizen of the Year. I speak at Hall Middle School Career Day every year. And I have Girl Scout troops and 4H groups visit my office on a regular basis. I've mentored many local students and have written many letters of recommendation for students to get into veterinary school. This new location will have no negative impacts and will allow a locally owned practice to stay locally owned. The only negative impact on the community that I can see would be for you not to allow this permit to occur. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that. With that, let me go ahead and bring it back to the council. Are there any questions of Sebastian, Mary or Tracy? Okay, seen none. Go ahead, Lea.
Thanks. Yeah, I just had a quick question or two. Tracy, did you guys consider? I don't even know if this is possible. Is it possible that you could move them to C3 but also leave them in C4? Just so you have those options for them to be in both districts or did you guys consider that or what are the options there?
There's no change to the C4 district with respect to veterinarians offices being allowed as a permitted use to C4. The existing vet office, Madera Pet Hospital, that's a C4 district over there across from the Amy's Restaurant. So there's still would be a permitted use in C4.
Gotcha. Great. Okay. And then I just am curious about the the soundproofing thing. Is there something about vets offices that make a lot of sound? I wouldn't think so, but I'm just curious.
I think maybe in 1958, maybe there was. You know, I think also someone like Sebastian could probably speak to this. When you have a vet as a tenant, if there are any concerns at all, that those are, you know, best addressed by a building owner and a lesee versus maybe the town, but I couldn't really guess back then, maybe when they considered zone classification, there was certain aspects that that were noisy. I think maybe Mary can answer as far as her practice and her experience if there is noise.
Sorry. Yeah, we don't have any noise issues. We've been practicing in Larkspur Lanning, which is now the Marin Country Mark, a very popular social area with restaurants, gyms, and we have not gotten a noise complaint in the 26 years that I've been there.
Those are all my questions. Thank you all.
Thanks, Lea. Are there any other questions from town council? Okay, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item? And we have one hand raised so far and that's Phyllis.
Phyllis, are you able to unmute?
I'm speaking not only for myself, but also as the vice chair of the planning commission. And I urge you to consider this change in a positive way. If you look at the first map that Tracy showed, which gave the report, you'll see that C4, where my own vet is across the freeway, it's directly across the freeway from the C3 district. And it doesn't make sense that you would allow a veterinary hospital on one side of the freeway and not the other. It's a good location. It is convenient for people to use. And as I say, I urge you to support this proposal of changing the code and allowing veterinary hospitals within a C3 designation. Thank you.
Thanks for the comments, Phyllis. I do not see any other hands raised. Do we receive any emails? Rebecca?
I'm on mute, so.
That's okay.
No, we did not receive any emailed public comments on the side.
All right. Thanks for that. I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to town council for discussion. And we are looking for a motion to introduce the ordinance. And that's my understanding. Correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca. There'll be a second reading at our next meeting, correct?
That's correct. If council chooses to introduce the ordinance, we would bring it back for a second reading and possible adoption at the next available council meeting.
Okay, so who would like to start us off? Bob?
As somebody who's been taking their dogs to vets in San Rafael for the past couple of years, I am all for this and I would like to move that we introduce this ordinance. Thanks.
Okay, so I'll take that as a motion and we have a second by Eli. Is there any further discussion from town council members?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a second to say that the Jacobics and Sebastian, the improvements to that facility have been beautiful and I really enjoy the continued stewardship of the properties over there. And I think it's a great honor to be able to help you, you know, approve another use and encourage you to continue to make our community better. And also, my dog goes to that veterinarian and so having him even closer is great for the community. I know there's many others that'll enjoy that service as well. And yeah, thank you very much for both coming and sorry that, you know, it was this oversight that we had to correct.
Any other comments from town council members? Any other further discussion? Okay, go ahead and call for the vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Yes. And with that, Sebastian, Mary, we want to thank you and we're looking forward to having you in our community in the Corder Madera side. So appreciate that. And thanks, Sebastian. Great job on the building. Looks really nice. Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and move to business items 5A. It's, I want to say that time of year again where we get our annual audit report. And with that, I will turn it over to our finance director, Daria.
Thank you. Ralph Marcello, the town's independent auditor, is here to present the audit. This is his third year of auditing the books for Corder Madera. So he is here to present this audit.
Ladies and gentlemen, can you hear me?
Yep, yes.
Okay, all right, good. Well, I want to thank you for the opportunity to perform your audit this year. As usual, your finance department was very cooperative and prompt, providing us with the audit documents that we examined. We found that finance department's records to be in very good condition. We completed our audit this year without findings or issues and are able to issue an independent auditor's report without qualifications or modifications. This is sometimes referred to as a clean opinion. We previously mentioned the management in our statement on auditing standards letter that there's a limited segregation of duties in the accounting department due to a small office staff. And this is applicable to both the town and the sanitary district. This is a common issue in small governments and it's difficult to find a very good cost-effective method to reduce these risks to an acceptable level. You know, the larger cities will have maybe 30 or 40 people in their finance department. So in these kind of limited internal control environments, it's very important to town council to let employees know on a regular basis that fraud or misappropriation of assets will not be tolerated. And if violated, can lead to employment termination or additional legal ramifications. We have found that this type of communication will often reduce both the risk of misappropriation of assets and also fraudulent financial reporting. I'm going to refer to pages 54 right now in the audit report. Cordova's primary general fund comes from, general fund revenue comes from its two sources, sales taxes and property taxes, and also to a certain extent, TOT or transit accuracy tax. These three sources provided the town with 19 million of its 23 million, which it took to operate the town this past year. And this revenue increased 13% over the prior year in spite of the COVID issue. Now, on page 54, which is the income statement, we see that in fund, in the general fund, which is general fund number 01, the change in fund balance or the excess of revenue or expenses was $11.8 million. Now, remember, this type of financial statement is prepared using the governmental accounting method, which is a type of modified cash basis. So this in particular statement includes the $26 million in bond proceeds as revenue in accrual basis. This wouldn't be reported as such. And also, it records the payment of $18 million to CalPERS as pension expense, when otherwise it would be considered a reduction of liability in accrual basis of accounting. So when you make these adjustments to give a realistic presentation of the financial with the change in fund balance or the net profit, as we call it in private business, the town brought in somewhere between three and $4 million as a net profit, which included a federal grant of 1.3 million. Which you can take this down one more step when you exclude the debt proceeds and the COVID subsidy grants. And you'll see that the primary revenue increases came from property tax. And as we know, proposition 13 allows the county assessor to increase property taxes 2% each year of the prior year's assessment. So basically, the town did cut back on its expenses and with the federal grants, it did not suffer a traumatic situation like some of our other city clients suffered. Some cities had to cut back hours and and go back to almost the way it was in the recession, four days on and one day off. Now expenses. We talked about expenses in the past couple of years primarily related to CalPERS pension, the fine benefit pension plan and the OPEB, other post-employment benefits plan. These have been considered wild cards for city managers to try to figure out how to do their budget every year. And with, during the recession, CalPERS did not bring in as much as they had planned to bring in. They estimate they'll bring in about 7% a year net of their 5.15% administration fee. So the good news, the good news this past year is that CalPERS earned 4.7% in fiscal year 2020 on their $300 billion balance. The better news is that in fiscal year 2021, June 30th, that just ended, CalPERS earned 21.3% on their $300 billion in assets. Yeah, I find that really hard to believe because I have never seen CalPERS bring in 21.3% in all these years I've been doing these audits. But if you were to blend them both together, they averaged about 12, 13% a year. That's why they use this rolling average of five to 15 years to try to determine how much they can earn. So with swings like that, the 7% investment rate of return that they try to achieve is very conservative. Last year, we discussed just lightly some of the state's budget needs. In our government state committee, we have several people in our committee from the state controllers office. And they discuss how this state has tried to, you know, quote, borrow money from cities and counties in the past. We have no idea where the state's financial position stands right now. If you look on the internet, you'll find that the state had a budget windfall of $26 billion this past year. And if you look on the same internet webpage, you'll see that they also show a $17 billion operating deficit. So you can just pick the headline you want and try to plan your budgets with that. Either way, the town of Corder Madera set aside some really good reserves for that proverbial rainy day. And you should be able to withstand anything the state throws against you since they're trying to increase revenue rather than cut their expenses. Well, that ends the city presentation. We have any questions or comments?
Are there any questions from any town council members? No? Okay. Ralph, just to kind of clarify, you didn't find any major internal control weaknesses? You mentioned the one thing about segregation of duties, which I think that's been ongoing for a couple of years is just because we have small staff, I want to say. And then the second part is it sounds like financially, we're in pretty good shape.
You are in very good shape. I hate to put my neck out on a chopping block by saying that, but you're in very good shape. As far as internal controls, one small city we audit, the finance director does everything except write, sign checks. And one of the controls that we were able to come up with is they hired an outside company to review the bank reconciliations after the finance director does that. Even one of your local cities does that. They have the city treasurer review the bank reconciliations. So I don't know if that's feasible for Corder Madera. But I think your city manager also reviews the bank reconciliations. That's the biggest weakness we see is when you only have a couple of people in the finance department. It's kind of hard to have a segregation of duties when everybody does a little of everything.
Okay.
You do have, you do have insurance, you know, but that's only recovery. That's not a preventive policy.
Right. Thanks.
If I could just say one thing, we do have, you know, a very part-time employee who does come in and review the bank recs after I reconcile them and also review all of the journal entries that I process. And now that we've, you know, we're reorganizing our finance department and we have a senior accountant, as soon as our next employee is hired and trained and everything, my hope is that I can hand over all of those items to the senior accountant and then I can review the work.
Okay, thanks. It sounds like you have a plan in place.
Yes, that would be a good plan.
Are there any other questions from town council members? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak regarding our internal audit financials? Rebecca, did we get any emails in on this subject?
She said, no, we did not receive any emails, public comments on the side.
Okay, with that, I will go ahead and bring it back to town council for any further discussion and a possible motion. And the motion is with respect to accepting the audit report. Yeah, Bob?
Terrific report. Incredible job by the staff. I'd move to accept it. Thanks.
Is there a second? Charles, second it. Is there any further discussion from anybody? Okay, and I'm sorry, let me back up for a minute. I'll go ahead and close public comment. I didn't see any raised hands. So with that, we have a motion. We have a second. There's no further discussion. Go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
America's system.
Yes. We're going to, since we have our independent auditor on the phone, we're going to do something a little bit different. We're actually going to recess the town council meeting. We're going to go into the SD2 meeting so we can also look at the independent audit report on that. And then we'll come back to the town council meeting. So with that, I'll go ahead and recess the town council meeting and I will go ahead and call to order the sanitary district two meeting. And with that, Rebecca, can we get a roll call, please? the sanitary district two meeting. And with that, Rebecca, can we get a roll call, please?
Board member Beckman?
Here.
Board member Mondon?
Here.
Board member of Azia?
There.
Board vice president Lee?
There.
And board president Susan.
Here. We just have a, sorry, a couple of small housekeeping, housekeeping items. We do have the urgency ordinance, which is related to teleconference meetings for the board of the sanitary district. That's item number two A. And with that, Rebecca, I don't know, can you just give a two-minute overview on that, please?
Yes, I think I can give a thirty-second overview. This is a, on our town council agenda as a consent calendar item. But the reason why it's before you as an urgency item is because your board has not met as, as a body since prior, since, since the legislation that went into effect October first. So your last meeting was in September as a sanitary district board. And this is a resolution that must be adopted every thirty days so that the body approves continuation of meeting by video conference. And you're allowed to meet by video conference to approve meeting by video conference. So that is why it's at the top of the agenda as your first item. And if you meet again within thirty days, it will just be presented on the agenda as a consent calendar item.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Rebecca from board members? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up for public comment. Is there any public comment regarding the urgency ordinance? Seeing none, did we receive any emails in Rebecca?
Uh, no, we did not receive any emailed comments.
Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board for a motion and possible action. Yeah, Bob.
Move to approve the resolution.
Is there a second? Thanks, Eli. Is there any further discussion? Okay, go ahead and call for the vote.
Board member Beckman?
Yes.
Board member Mondon?
Yes.
Board member of Azia?
Yes.
Board vice president Lee?
Yes.
And board president Susan.
Yes. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and just run through the agenda really quickly. I'm gonna go ahead and open up again. This is for the sanitary two district meeting. I'm gonna open up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public wishes to be on a topic that is not on the sanitary two district agenda? Rebecca, do we get any emails in?
No, so we did not receive any emails, public comments for open town.
Okay, seeing no hands raised, I will go ahead and close public comments. We have no presentations. This is now item five consent calendar. These are items that are in the normal course of business. They don't require any further discussion. A member of the board, staff or the public may pull an item from the consent calendar for further review and or discussion. With that, is there anybody from staff and or the board that wishes to pull an item from the consent calendar? With that, I'll go ahead and open up to the public. Is there anybody from the public wishing to pull an item from the sanitary two district consent calendar? Do we receive any emails, Rebecca?
No, we did not receive any emails, comments on the consent calendar items.
Okay, with that, I will go ahead and close public comment, not seeing any hands raised. Bring it back to the board for discussion and or possible motion to approve the consent items. Yeah, Bob.
Move to approve five A and five B.
Is there a second? Leave a second sit. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Board member Beckman?
Yes.
Board member Mondon?
Yes.
Board member of Azia?
Yes.
Board vice president Lee?
Yes.
And board president Susan.
Yes, we have no public hearings and that brings us to our business item, which is independent audit report for sanitary district two. So I'll turn it back over to Daria and also Ralph, our independent auditor.
Okay, I'll, I'll start then. Well, as I mentioned, discussing the town, your finance department was very cooperative and prompt and providing us with the sanitary district records. One thing the district did this year was they were able to meet their goals and they came in three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars over budget. Again, these government budgets are just a working tool where they record all revenue and expenses and it's not done in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So your budget, your revenue came in really good at about three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars over budget. The annual budget, as I mentioned, is mostly cash basis of accounting. So your budget on page twenty-one shows an operating fund surplus or deficit of twenty-two point one million dollars to the positive. And the reason it shows that is it doesn't show the capital outlay expenditures. Generally, in a cash basis statement, the cash spent for capital outlay would be six point two million. So when you consider the accrual basis of counting, the, the district actually came in with a two point one million dollar surplus. In that statement on page ten, there's a category under operating expenses called general and administrative. And they show it at two hundred and thirty-four thousand. It was actually budgeted a little bit more, one point three million. And that's because it included some improvements that citizens were allowed to take advantage of either through grants or borrowing. And that didn't happen. So consequently, there was only two hundred and thirty-four thousand in expenditures instead of one point three million. And one thing some of the other cities are doing this particular year and the prior years, when there's government grants and COVID pass-throughs from the city to the citizens, the city seemed to like to show this as a separate line item. And they call it something like community development or community sharing or something like that. And it lets the people that read the financial statements know that it's not an ordinary operating expense of the town and that they're sharing the grant money that comes through. So and then in this case of the, oh, the one million dollars or so that was going to be budgeted for sewer improvement grants and improvements to the sewer system, I think only about eighty-eight thousand was actually loaned out or granted. So that's the only recommendation I have is to consider maybe a separate line item for grants given to citizens for improvements or grants passed through. So otherwise, the town, the sanitation district did very well this year. Two point one million in revenues compared to one point eight last year. There were some, let's see. They were gonna, there was gonna be about six million dollars spent on capital improvements. And the town spent a little bit less than that, around three point eight million. And so I'm assuming that what's not spent this year will be carried forward to the future. Other than that, this particular district is in pretty good condition, also similar to your town.
All right, thanks. We appreciate that. I'll bring it back for questions and I do not cut anybody off and I apologize. I do have a question and maybe it's directed towards Todd and Daria mostly. If I'm hearing that correctly, we allocate like a million dollars plus or minus in grants, but only eighty-eight thousand was taken advantage of?
That's correct. Grants and loans. That's correct. Daria has the exact numbers on that.
Todd, can you speak to that just a little maybe?
Yeah, so in some of our projects, we were able to use other pots of money to help citizens. But whenever we have the opportunity, you know, we, we want to utilize that grant program. The current fiscal year that we're talking about in twenty twenty, I think it was new and people were still learning about it. This year, I'll tell you that there's a much bigger emphasis and there, and there were very unique situations that we've talked about with the council. You know, of trying to problem solve and using this pot of money to help residents on some of those, those issues where there's shared laterals, for instance, where you have a long run and there's four laterals that run into it and you're talking about that could be a thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollar repair. And so we're using that fund to help, you know, residents. So staff is being aggressive. We're really making an emphasis from a communication standpoint to really let residents know it's there. It's on our website. It's a one-page form that you fill out. It's really easy to access, to access. And so we're, we're making a really big effort. But to your point, Mr. Mayor, you know, I think it's just taken us, you know, twelve to eighteen months to really educate the community of what's out there. But as a reminder, you know, a lot of our, our infrastructure projects, we've really attacked, as you know, paving roads and we start with repairing the mains underneath the roads and the laterals. And on those town projects, before we pave, the town is paying one hundred percent of those costs for those lower laterals. So that's probably another reason why you're not seeing this, this fund being used as much because we're not expecting the residents to pay for that. We're paying for that.
Okay, so it sounds like you're making efforts to get that out there, that there's these grants that are available. It just seemed like, I know it's two thousand twenty, it just seems like a million dollars. It's a ton of money.
Yeah, and so we do, we do roll it over. The board has been kind enough to, you know, it's a priority for the board. We want to get this money to our community. And so we absolutely, it doesn't go back into a reserve fund. It's being rolled over to the following year. We want to spend it. We want to get it to the residents.
Okay. Does anybody else from town, or I'm sorry, the board have any questions? Yeah.
Is that an interest-bearing account, the million dollars just came up? If it keeps rolling over, is it, or is it just like assigned? Is it?
Um, all of the, the sanitary district funds and the town funds are all pooled into one account. We don't have a lot of separate accounts and they're just segregated on the town's books. So most of the money is in the Lath account, the local agency investment fund account at the state, which is interest-bearing. Interest rates are very low now, but it is interest-bearing. And of course, we keep enough in our operating account, you know, for day-to-day activities. But yes, with all the other funds, it is in an interest-bearing account at the state.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, I'll go ahead and open up for public comment. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on our audit report? We have one hand raised from Roy.
Roy, you should be able to mute yourself.
Okay, unmuted, Roy Wolford. I just want to compliment Ralph, particularly from the, the, the prior meeting on January nineteenth, when he brought up the issue of flooding and sea level rise. And he mentioned that he had a client and he also talked about what the rate of sea level rise was. And he was pretty much spot on. And unfortunately, one of the, the members had come up with a number. It says it told Ralph, hey, I want to inject here. Sea level is really rising one to two inches a year for the past last five years in California. And that was highly inaccurate. It was only an opinion. Ralph was stating scientific measurement in fact. So if Ralph was still on the line, I compliment you and I really think the town owes you an apology.
No, you don't. You know, this is, I deal with citizens at these public hearings all the time. Everyone's entitled to their opinion.
Indeed.
Since you brought that up, Roy.
We can't hold on. Roy, are you finished with your public comment?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank, no, thanks. I appreciate the comments. I'm sorry, Ralph, go ahead.
Oh, well, I wasn't going to bring this up, but since you mentioned sea level rise, the client that I mentioned last year, they're down south. They have a wastewater treatment plant they've had since nineteen oh eight. They were informed this year that the California Coastal Commission is not going to renew their license in the future. Not only that, they have forty years to move out of their wastewater treatment plant. They have to tear it down and then they have to restore the land to its pre nineteen oh eight habitat. Now, last year, the coastal commission told my client they have to build a fifty-foot wall. Now, they already have about a, I don't know, a twelve-foot wall around the plant, but it's never flooded in, what is it, a hundred and ten years. So fortunately, you folks don't have to worry about that. Your wastewater treatment plant is down the road a little bit up north. But it's gonna be interesting times ahead. Fortunately, I won't be here to watch it.
Thanks, Ralph. We appreciate the comments. Rebecca, did we get any emails in? Public emails in regarding independent audit reports on sanitary district two?
I'm just refreshing now and no, we did not receive any emailed comments on the second.
Okay, seeing no other hands raised, go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the board. And we're looking for either additional discussion and or a motion for the acceptance of the independent audit report.
So moved.
Okay, there's, is there a second? We have a motion in a second. I'm sorry, Bob, go ahead. Did you have a comment?
Second.
Thanks. Everybody wants a second. With that, if there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Okay, I was, I was looking down and writing. Was, was Bob the second?
I think Eli beat him to it, but it doesn't, it's one half dozen or the other. Oh, Charles just added a fourth.
Board member Beckman?
Yes.
Board member Mondon?
Yes.
Board member of Azia?
Yes.
Board vice president Lee?
Yes.
And board president Susan.
Yes, and while we're in the sanitary district two meeting, because I don't think there will be much discussion on this, is there a district, item number eight, is there a district manager report, Todd?
Fine.
Thank you. Did any board members have any reports? Okay, seeing none. And then we have discussion or draft for upcoming board meeting. If anybody has any agenda items, please let either Rebecca or myself know. And with that, we're actually going to close and adjourn the sanitary two district meeting, which means we won't, will not have it after our town council meeting. And we're gonna go back and into our town council meeting. And with that, hold on a minute.
Mr. Mayor, as you're getting set for the agenda, would you consider flipping item six B with six C? As we have a number of community members on the call for the climate discussion, committee discussion. And I would like to move that item up out of respect of their time.
Yeah, is everybody okay with that? I assume Amy, I don't need a motion, right? Okay, so while we're gonna go ahead and flip six C and six B, so with that, I will turn over to you, Todd, for resolution creating a climate action committee.
Thank you for that consideration, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We're also at the same time bringing over a few of our temporary climate action committee members, Amy Ross and Meredith Foster, and we also have David Johnson, Martin Wall and Leslie Alden on the call, I believe, as well. Back on February fourth, twenty twenty, the town council formed a temporary committee and they named it the Climate Action Committee. This was supposed to be temporary in nature for twelve months. At the time, we received eleven applicants for this temporary committee. The council decided at the time to appoint all eleven members. They also appointed then Vice Mayor Beckman and Councilmember Kuhnhardt to serve on the committee. The committee was asked to report back to the town council at a later date with its recommendations for additional action and or continuing programs or staffing requests. One of the issues when we first started this committee was that staff, it wasn't within the current work plan of the staff and council. And therefore, we didn't have staff really assigned to give it the, the attention that this committee really deserved. And so it took us a little longer. We did not report back after twelve months. We're reporting to you now. During the past two years, though, I just want to recognize that the town and town council has taken a number of positive steps toward climate action as well as adaptation. And those efforts are included on page one of your staff report. On December first of twenty twenty, the town council joined a number of jurisdictions across the country and approved a resolution declaring a climate emergency after a really extensive process with the planning department. On December fifteenth, twenty twenty, the town council approved the climate action plan. And on May eighteenth of twenty twenty-one, again, after I believe eighteen to twenty-four months of a process engaging our community, the town council approved the climate adaptation assessment. On October eighth, twenty twenty-one, the town council held a stretch strategic planning session with staff. And one of the priority goals of the council was to create and formalize a climate action committee. The town council recognized the need for ongoing technical assistance as well to address this policy priority of both climate action, education, and then also, if possible, wrapping in adaptation to this, this conversation. Because when you step back and look at what we're talking about, we have a climate action document, a living document, and we have a climate adaptation assessment living document. And those are our guiding principles to our decision-making matrix. And really, that's what we want to do. We want to, we want to consider those two documents and really form decision-making amongst staff pushed up to the council in those two areas. And so the creation of this formal, we believe, staff is recommending that we formalize this climate action committee. We think it's a strong step moving forward to this important goal of following the direction from the council. Your town manager and staff work closely with Councilmember Beckman, town attorney Amy Ackerman and our climate action committee working group members that I mentioned at the start of this call. The working group has completed that. The recommendation is outlined in this report as a first step. We believe that it's important to formalize this committee. Uh, we believe, uh, that it's important to formalize this committee. Uh, the committee, it's, it's attachment three of your staff report. The committee, uh, worked really hard over the past, uh, six months to propose, you know, what they want to be when they grow up, so to speak, and so it's a proposed purpose, mission, and responsibilities. Um, and they also have five, uh, proposed, um, educational actions, uh, that we would like to schedule in early 2022 for promotion, again, that's an attachment three of your staff report. Um, staff, uh, with the help of our town attorney Amy Ackerman, we're recommending the initial step that we create the climate action committee, that's attachment one, it's, it's via reso. And what we did is we summarized, uh, some key parts of that, um, that resolution. And so that's on page two of your report. Again, the climate action committee would be an advisory body to the town council on matters related to reducing greenhouse gas emissions and implementing the climate action plan. And then it also outlines, uh, without reading the report, but I'm happy to go through this. Um, it outlines a number of steps, um, that we would follow in our purpose. And then regarding the membership, this is open for discussion. Staff is recommending that the climate action committee be composed of no fewer than five members and no more than seven members with the council, um, with someone from council also being part of this, um, committee. Um, the qualifications are outlined, um, I think we have flexibility within these qualifications. I think one of the qualifications is, is for our current, our current members that were on the temporary, uh, climate action committee. They would be, I believe, um, if you look at, um, section 2A, they would meet that qualification. Uh, the appointment, again, members shall be appointed by the town council and serve at the pleasure of our town council. And these are two-year terms, so they're staggered moving forward. The other piece, um, is next steps, and so next steps, um, this again, I believe is page three of your, your staff report. If council decides to move forward with the creation of the climate action committee, we recommend, um, five, five things moving forward. And first, the town manager would immediately enter a contract for professional services, uh, to hire on Bob Brown to support the committee's work, uh, in the initial startup phase. And Mr. Brown would be assigned to the committee, um, depending on his availability, but we would try for early January of 2022, or as soon as you possibly can after the holiday. Uh, Mr. Brown has done a lot of work within the county of Marin, uh, he was a community development director. He has a lot of experience in this area in sustainability and climate action. Uh, he's helped Novato, Sam Raffel, and others really implement their, um, programs. And so, um, he's also helping us with our, uh, short-term rentals, as an example, so we have a good working relationship with them. Uh, that professional services contract is currently within, uh, my, um, authority to, um, start up and approve. Uh, it's also within the current budget, so under our, um, professional services, uh, budget. This next step would be Mr. Brown and the committee would immediately begin the educational work with our community on those five action plans that they have outlined in, uh, attachment three of the staff report. Um, and we also attach them and coordinate with our communications manager, Michael Moriarty, and really start that work immediately. Number three, Mr. Brown would work with the committee and staff to identify a job description for a coordinator position to support the town's efforts in climate action, sustainability, education, and potentially some level of adaptation, because that's really the long-term goal. And so we really would like to try to add adaptation of this process. The intent of the new coordinator, if the town council approves the job description, recruitment and hiring of such a position, um, would replace Mr. Brown, uh, and take over his duties moving forward after the hiring process is complete. Uh, staff will, uh, bring back recommendations to council for consideration, um, as Mr. Brown and, and the committee and staff, uh, begin this work. The overall estimated timeframe from this conversation right now to the implementation of the committee to hiring a full-time position, if the council chooses to go that way, is a three to six-month process, and that just depends, again, on how hard the recruitment is. Developing the job description, um, we don't think it'll take very long. We, we believe we can start education in January, we can start the work of a draft, uh, staff, uh, job description, something to counsel in February for you to review, start the recruitment, and then again, that's the timeframe. How long does it take for us to recruit and hire someone? Again, Mr. Brown, I think bringing out an outside perspective, our town, we only know what we know. Um, he's proven, he's respected, um, and he has a good track record, and we, we really want some outside, you know, outside thinking, uh, to our small town of what we're trying to do. And the last thing is, um, looking ahead long-term, the larger strategy, like I said at the start of the, the staff report, for our town is to streamline both mitigation and adaptation. Every conversation is really having a 50/50 discussion on both sides of this. And our guiding, uh, documents are the climate action plan and the climate adaptation assessment. And, and we believe if, if we develop this the right way and implement these actions, it's going to save our residents and property owner a significant amount of money, and it's going to protect our public and private property, and it's going to enhance the town's infrastructure and our longevity. And I think that's really what's going to separate us from our cohorts in this county. And we've already taken, um, some really, uh, major steps as a council and town, uh, in that area. With that, I'm going to stop, I'm excited, you have two people, uh, that are brought over as panelists, it's Amy Rojas and Meredith Foster. Um, and they've really, uh, spent a lot of time educating me on this, and so I want to give it over to them. They're going to gi- give you about five slides, kind of talk high level of what they're talking about, and I just, you know, it's our next generation, the work that Meredith is doing, it's inspiring. Um, it really got my attention about three months ago of like, look, this is a priority, let's step this up, let's make this happen. And so I'm going to turn it over to you, uh, Amy and Meredith, and you should be able to share your screen.
And I have the slides up too, if, if you run into any difficulty, just let me know.
Oh, do you, do you have them up?
I do.
Okay, so I can't see them, but that's okay, we're on the.
Oh, no, 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 I, I, I have them ready to share if you're unable to share them yourself, but if you, if you want me to just go ahead and run it?
Yeah, that would be great, thank you. Hi, everybody, I'm Amy Ruiz, um, as Todd mentioned, part of the working group for the Climate Action Committee, and I have been a Corder Madera resident for 14 years. So I'm really excited about what we've been able to do as a working group and also everything that, um, Todd outlined. Um, as he mentioned, Meredith is on the line as well as Leslie Alden, Dave Johnson, and Martin Wall, who are all part of this working group and have contributed to all of this thinking around, um, like Todd said, what we want to be when we grow up. So I thought that we would just highlight what our purpose is and the mission, and then Meredith is going to talk about what she's been working on in terms of building awareness in the community. So, you know, at the highest levels you can see here, our mission as a group is really to inspire the town leadership, inspire the community to reach zero, um, uh, reduced greenhouse gas emissions. And, um, we have a purpose and how we think we can get there is listed here. But essentially, if you look at point number one, we think as a working group and a committee, we can make really strong recommendations to the staff and to the council on policies, regulations, and everything in line with the climate action plan, and even thinking through some of those goals and targets, certainly as they ladder up to the state goals. And then promoting community action, that's something we have been working on, and, and as Todd mentioned, is something we can work on as we move through this six-month process, um, of formulating or formalizing the committee. So we think we can create action around what's included in the cap, and we'll walk through some of the biggest priorities, um, and both obviously residential and commercial. And then, you know, we, there's a real opportunity to have continuity between, um, there already is continuity between the jurisdictions, but the, the committee can play a role in doing that across the various towns in Marin County as well as different climate organizations, um, in the Bay Area, so we're excited about that. So this is our purpose, and, um, Rebecca, if you don't mind advancing, we can look at sort of where we think we're going to get the biggest bang for our buck and how we can have the biggest impact. And you're looking at two pie charts here, one is Corder Madera emissions by sector from our cap, and the other is natural gas use in California from electrify Marin. I don't think there'll be any huge surprises in these charts, um, but I do want to just highlight what the numbers show and what we'll be operating against, which is, um, Corder Madera emissions, the largest one is transportation, at 70%. And that's obviously hu- if we can put a dent in that, we have a big impact. The second biggest area is energy and specifically natural gas. Um, and if you look over to that second pie chart, you can see where the biggest contributors are to that natural gas emissions, which is space heating and water heating, and then of course, cooking. So if we can make an impact here, not only are we, are we, you know, saving the planet, um, but we are also making it safer and healthier in our homes when it comes to natural gas. Uh, point I just want to make on transportation, as you look at, you know, reducing, um, trans, you know, reducing use of cars, what we've seen since 2005, that in Corder Madera, we've only reduced miles traveled by 1%. So our really big opportunity here is to, to get, um, to increase EV adoption, which is something we're focused on as a committee. So all told, looking at these numbers, we're really optimistic. In Corder Madera, we think it's, uh, many people want to make a difference, so it's really about generating awareness. So if we go to the next slide, you can see kind of how we're already starting to do this. We were really excited to be at the Lions, um, Club Car Show and promoting EV pledges, and we also had a partnership there with Ride and Drive Clean, as well as Electrify Marin, to educate folks coming through the car show on what it means to adopt a EV vehicle. Could they pledge that their next car be an EV? And we talked a lot about charging and range and price points. So this was exciting, and we look forward to doing more of that. So I'll let Meredith walk through, um, what, uh, what we're thinking about and all the great plans she's got.
Rebecca, if you could move to the next slide, thank you. Um, hi, my name's Meredith Foster, I'm Corder Madera resident, I'm also a high school student, and I'm a member of this committee's working group, and so I'm really excited to be here today. Um, one aspect of the outreach we're developing, um, in this working group is forming a team of student ambassadors from our local schools to communicate the committee's campaigns to our school communities and families. Because I know young people care about climate action, so this program would allow students to seek leadership opportunities and channel their passion and concern for the environment. Um, so I, I was hoping we'd be able to form groups about five, 10 students per school, per school from Neil Cummins, the Cove Hall, and potentially Redwood High School. Um, we'd meet each month, uh, and formulate and develop ways to translate the committee's campaigns, um, to a student, uh, student audience. So sort of working on a parallel track to the committee, but bringing it out to students. And some of the work we would do would include making posters, videos, um, having school-wide announcements, and helping the committee, uh, host outreach and awareness events as well. So if we could move to the next slide. Um, and so, uh, looking ahead, our top climate actions we'll be focusing on as a committee, um, that we would feel have the most impact, first, transportation, as Amy mentioned, um, it accounts for almost 70% of Corder Madera's carbon emissions. So increasing EV adoption is definitely here on our list, um, especially because current EV adoption rates in Corder Madera is around 5%. So we will also be promoting, um, electrification of the home, uh, especially increasing awareness on replacing, um, gas appliances, particularly heating and air conditioning and water heaters, um, which make up combined around 88% of California's residential natural gas use. Um, and then two additional goals are first, reducing landfill and promoting recycling and composting, and then also reducing our carbon footprint by purchasing locally. And some, um, some, uh, channels of outreach we've used in the past to achieve our goals are, um, utilizing our webpage on the town website, um, sharing messaging in local school newsletters, and using the electronic message board outside the community center, um, as well as hanging up banners around town. And we hope to use these channels in the future, um, in addition to exploring new forms of outreach. If we could move to the next slide. Um, so as you look ahead to 2022, um, in January, we plan to further develop our, uh, plans for outreach and awareness as well as recruit our student ambassadors. Um, in February, we would continue to work on these campaigns, and then as well as host meetings with the student ambassadors, uh, to focus on their education and awareness around our various campaign topics. Um, in March, we would kick off our awareness campaign, which would be then centering around EV adoption, because the local organization Drive Clean Bay Area, Bay Area would be focusing, are, will be focusing on EVs, um, at that time as well. So we would hope to use that momentum, um, as we begin our awareness campaigns. And then in April, specifically around Earth Day on April 22nd, um, we would shift our focus to electrification of the home, and that campaign would continue through May. So that's a brief overview of our timeline looking ahead. Um, we really look forward to working with town staff, um, town council, and Mr. Brown on making this come to life. And thank you all for your time.
Thank you, uh, can you unshare the screen, um, Rebecca? And thank you, Mr. Mayor, we'll turn it back over to you.
Thanks, does anybody, we appreciate those comments by Wayne, great presentation from both you. I'll exclude Todd for a minute, but from you two, great presentation, and it looks like you got a lot of good work coming ahead of you. Um, with that, I'll turn over to town council, are there any questions? Yeah, Leela, go ahead.
Um, thanks for the presentation, guys, really exciting work and really appreciate all the work you put into it. Um, I wondered, Meredith, I love the idea of the student ambassadors, and especially getting kids involved, so young, there's so much energy there, and, um, I think it's really worth tapping into that. I was curious, you said, um, Hall, Neil Cummins, the Cove, and possibly Redwood, and I was just curious if you could talk a little more about that.
Well, of course, the goal is Corder Madera, and it's more thinking about, um, which, you know, twin city schools we want to tap into. Over the summer and, uh, toward the end of last school year, um, I did connect with some younger students, and I wasn't sure if that age group would work so well, but I was able to meet several really, um, committed and driven and excited, uh, you know, fifth graders, and that just really inspired me, so I feel comfortable, um, engaging with that age group. And then it's more like, uh, just will we reach out to Larkspur, you know, Redwood? But I think I would be very happy to work with fellow high schoolers as well, so.
Great, thank you, and then just one other question, you know, a lot of the, um, suggestions that you guys have come up with, which I think are great in terms of EV and, you know, electrification of the home and things like that. You know, some of that is, is a cost issue for people, and I just wonder if you've thought through, you know, sort of equity issues there or ways that you can try to make, you know, suggestions that would be, um, that wouldn't have, um, that kind of a burden for people, or just how you've thought about that.
Yeah, I think that's going to, go ahead, Amy.
I was just going to, go ahead, I'm wondering if any other committee members are on too, if they want to chime in on this. We, I'm happy to, but want to give space for others.
Uh, let's do this, um, Eli, did you want to say something? Let's stick to the town council, and then we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment, that's okay? Eli, I'm sorry.
Sure, I, I just wanted to mention, because it's related to Leela's question, and I've been participating in these discussions with the working group over the last few months. And so one thing that we've been thinking about is, is exactly to Leela's point, right? A lot of these, you know, there's a lot of changes that, that regular people need to make in their daily lives to have a positive impact, climate-wise, and a lot of those changes cost money, and it's, it's a privilege to be able to make those changes, and for a lot of us, it's just out of reach, right? I'd love to drive an EV, but I can't afford one, so that's that. Um, and so I think one of the, one of the big kind of goals of this committee is going to be working sort of like a force multiplier for town staff, going out and, and actually aggressively hunting down any grant funding that may exist. Uh, because I think that's going to be a key to actually making these things happen in town, especially for folks who don't otherwise have the ability themselves, the financial ability, to make some of these expensive changes. Um, so that's just the, the two cents, Leela, since it speaks directly to, to your question.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have any other questions from town council? I just have a couple, and it's more the mechanics of the committee part of it. Why not commission instead of a committee, just out of curiosity?
There, I guess I, I defer to Amy on that, if she has any.
And again, it may just be semantics, um, just to me, commission just bumps it up, this is just in my mind, to a much higher level, we have a parking rec commission, planning commission, it just seems in my mind it bumps it up to a higher level.
Um, it's a good question, there's not really a, a hard and fast rule about commissions and committees. I think our commissions, maybe not all of them, but at least I know planning, and I know, uh, parking recs are created by ordinance and are in our, uh, municipal code. And I think that's one distinguishing feature, and here we've, we've create, we're creating it by resolution. Honestly, it's a faster vehicle, there's only one reading. Um, but certainly if it's the, the pleasure of, um, council, we could, we could create it, uh, I mean, when we, you know, it sometimes has to do with the longevity of an entity. If, if you have a, a single-purpose committee that you're not anticipating going to be in existence forever, you might do it as a committee rather than put it in the, you know, municipal code. I, I, I mean, I.
Yeah, let's say one other thing, I think two things, and I think Adam helped me with this a little bit too. One is we're still growing, we're, we're growing, like, what are we going to be, and how many resources? We throw an extraordinary amount of resources at a commission, and a commission historically, as Adam would point out too, and Amy, it has decision-making authority as well. Right here, it's a recommendation, it's coming up, it's funneling up through, through the commit, the committee, to staff, to the council, or sometimes maybe the planning commission, where they would make recommend, so that, that is the difference, that's the difference. And I think we need to, we're not positioned, we're not set up, our, from an infrastructure standpoint yet, to, to give that decision-making authority as a commission. I think committee's appropriate, let's see what we can do over the next 12 months, I think we're going to make significant growth. And I think we continue to have this conversation with the council.
Okay, okay, that's fair enough, again, I just think it's something we should get out there, um, for. Again, I just think it's something we should get out there for the future because I see this more longevity. And you know, like park and rec, park and rec is advisory, which seems like it's similar. The other question is, will the committee go through the same selection process as we do other commissions and committees with the recruitment process? And all that? And then interviews by two council members? Again, I'm just trying to get the, I'm all for this, by the way, just the mechanics down.
Yeah, I think the recommendation, I mean, while we're talking about it, I think, yes, we handle like we do everything else. And I would recommend if he's still interested that council member Beckman stay attached to this group. I think there's been a lot of work to this point and that we have, you know, a combination of, you know, staff with council member Beckman and we do interviews.
Okay.
That would be the body.
Thanks, and then just one last question, because I know park and rec, they actually have, I want to say, one junior commissioner, which is high school age, I think it's under the age of 18. How will this committee work? Because I want to make sure that those under 18 are also getting opportunity to join the committee if they can. We're not cutting anybody out, if you know what I mean, in that sense.
Qualifications are specific. I mean, in this case, you know, Meredith is a, is a high school, is a student, but she would meet the criteria based on her work, you know, so far with the temporary committee. So, but I think moving forward, I think, Amy, I'll defer to you on if there's a, if under the qualifications, if it allows.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that we're being as inclusive across age levels as we can, especially for all the work that I want to say Meredith and the high school, you know, if that's high schoolers have been doing. I think they deserve, you know, their seat at the table.
Well, I think, I think there's a couple of ways you can address this. The current resolution suggests it requires between five and seven members. And then we have a list of qualifications and it is looking for a diversity of expertise and experience, professional or lived in a wide variety of, of subject areas. And I did research climate action committees across the country to look for some of the best practices in drafting this. If it is the pleasure of council, we could, we could add a designated youth seat for, for a high school student. Or we could, I mean, I think, I think you could find a high school student as Meredith is, who meets the criteria that are in existence now. So I think it's really up to council what, what you'd like to, to do here.
Okay. Go ahead.
If you also think about it, there's a lot of different kind of pockets of work that this committee will do. And there'll be a lot of subgroups, you know, just because you're not a committee member doesn't mean you don't do really important work. You might be part of a working group on a specific task with two committee members on it and have a number of students part of it. So there's a lot of different variables here going on. And so when you think about you have five to seven members, keep in mind that we had 11 on the current working on the committee. And so we have some work to do there. What is that going to look like? Who are we going to accept onto this full-time committee? I think we're positioned pretty well right now.
Okay, all right, thanks. Are there any other questions from Town Council members? Okay, with that, I will go ahead and open it up for public comment. One thing to note, I'm in the Town Council chambers and I'm losing power on my Mac even though I'm plugged in. So hopefully I don't like go dead, for lack of better words. Rebecca is smiling.
Charles could get a trial by fire.
I'll go see if I can fix that for you.
Yeah, I don't know if they killed the power. I mean, the lights are on, nobody's home, the lights are on, but my Mac is going, it's going to go to sleep in like a minute and I'm plugged in. So that's why I kind of disappeared for a while. So I apologize about that, but yeah.
Lorena is heading in there to see if she can help.
Thank you.
I'm going to miss that building.
It's the 50-foot extension cord that goes next door. I'm sorry, with that, let's go ahead and open up for public comment and I see a hand raised, which is Pat Ravazia.
Hi, hi, I am very excited about this work. Meredith, you are the leader that the world is waiting for and I think you're going to do an amazing job. And I know you already got a huge, huge task on your plate, but I would love for you to just step back and think about it a little more globally and not just about Corder Madera. Because the people who grow up in Corder Madera happen to be some of the smartest and most ready to take on this challenge. And so what I would love to see is not only you outreach to Corder Madera, but this effort outreach to the globe. And as far as having an aggressive social media presence and actually a public relations component can show a real example of the kind of leadership. Because when I hear you speak, I think, oh, my relations back in the Midwest, they're not on that page yet, but they need to be. So I'm a former PR person and journalist and writer, and I would be very happy to support your efforts in terms of getting you publicity and would love to be connected with Meredith or anyone on the committee. Who, and there's also, there's people who are making a film right now from the Buckminster Fuller Institute and it's student filmmakers and they're making films about things that are happening in climate change. And this seems like maybe that could be a great subject too. So lots of possibilities for ways to really let Marin lead and let Corder Madera lead the way we have, all the talent and all the capabilities to do. And I just don't think we should restrict that great talent to just our town. So thanks a lot and look forward so much to seeing what you do. Thank you very much, all of you on the committee. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat, appreciate the comments. Is there anyone else, I wish you raised your hand, speak under public comment? Rebecca, did we get any emails in on this subject?
Thank you, I'm just refreshing briefly.
And we.
No, we did not receive any emailed public comments. Leslie Alden does have her hand raised at the moment though, and she did put two comments in the Q and A that she, she may want to address.
Okay, why don't we bring her over? And Leslie, why don't you come on over and join us and Rebecca, Becky, we'll bring you over. And my computer's getting charged up, so Charles, you're off the hook.
Committee member Alden is joining.
For some reason, there we go, there's my camera. Well, hi, everyone, I just wanted to just thank Todd and, and council member Beckman, Town Manager Todd Cusimano and the others on this committee. It's been just a great time working together, thinking through problems, collaborating and, and doing the work that, that we need to be doing as, as community members and as partners to, to solve some pretty big problems and approach these things with open minds and, and some real interesting thinking, just really sometimes thinking out of the box and sometimes really focusing down on very strategic directions. And it's just been a real pleasure to work with council members and, and with staff and certainly with, with the others on this committee. So I just wanted to thank the council for considering this and I look forward to being of whatever help and service I can be in the future.
Thanks, we appreciate that, appreciate all your work. I don't see any more hands raised and we have no more emails. So I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to Town Council for discussion of possible motion. And Eli, do you mind kicking it off since you've been involved with this more than any of us have and you've been involved since the beginning? Thanks.
Sure thing, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to repeat what was said, so just in the interest of time, I just want to thank the working group that's here. I think what they've already accomplished so far, even over the past year in the middle of COVID and without dedicated staffing has blown my mind. So that's incredible and I think honestly it shows that this, this group has the, you know, has the talent to get this done. You know, I think Todd hit it right on the head in his staff report, the big why of why we're doing this, right? It's mitigation and it's adaptation. And what it all boils down to ultimately is protecting private and public property in town, saving residents money and making Corder Madera more beautiful and long-lived, you know, place for us to all call home. So I think it's fantastic, thrilled to support it. The other thing I just wanted to point out is that, again, to Leela's question, right? A lot of our climate, climate action plan goals are looking for, you know, big changes to, to the climate impact of our entire community and that's, that's changes from all of us. And the town, our staff doesn't have the bandwidth to be reaching out to every resident. And I think that that is the way in which this, this, this committee is really like a force multiplier, right? It's because they are able to supplement staff there and be, be able to be boots on the ground, interfacing with residents. You know, I think we heard from public comments from residents that they want to get involved and help spread the word and help, you know, do PR for, for this, you know, for this effort. So I think that, that it's just, for me, it's like great bang for the buck to get an established priority of the towns taken care of, you know, using residents and using volunteer power, which I think is, is, you know, what Corder Madera is best at. I think, you know, Mayor, because this is your comments about whether it's a committee or commission. I too like the idea of making it a commission, just I think it's obvious that, that the problem that this committee is addressing is not going anywhere. But, but I also support Todd's recommendation of just starting off as a committee and really being able to grow into the framework. And then if that leads us, you know, a year down the road to boosting itself to a commission, I would support that wholeheartedly, but we'll get there when we get there. And then I guess the last thing I'll just say that I would be thrilled to continue serving as a liaison to this committee. I don't, I don't want to be like on the committee because I think it's weird to have a member of the town council sitting on a committee that advises the town council, but I'm happy to continue as a liaison to it. And that is all, thank you.
Thanks. Are there any other comments? I have one question for Todd, one more. I know we're getting you a consultant. Is there any money either in this year's budget or perhaps next year's budget for marketing aspects of this? Especially like a public awareness campaign? Is there going to be, and again, it may not be a lot, is there money potentially that can be set aside for that?
Yes, absolutely, we have it within the current budget to do as much education and outreach as necessary. We can do mailers, we can do, we can do a lot, yeah.
Are there, is there any other comments from the Town Council members? No, okay, we are looking for a motion for Resolution Number 63 slash 2021, creating a climate action committee. Would somebody like to make the motion? Okay, Bob?
All moved.
Okay. Second, second by Eli. Is there any further discussion? Okay, go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And Mayor Casiza.
Yes, and Meredith, Amy, thank you again for all your hard work and all the work we're going to see out of you guys going forward. Great things to come. And Eli, congratulations, you're now the liaison for the Action Committee, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're going to go back to item 6B. And Adam, we appreciate your patience, you've gone through a SD2 meeting, another agenda item. And I know you've been waiting patiently downstairs in the Old Town Hall. So with that, I'll turn it over to you and also to Martha, thanks. And if I have this correct, we're not looking for a motion on this item. We're only, you're only looking for direction from us, correct? Okay, thanks.
That's, that's exactly right, thank, and thank you, Mayor. I get to say Mayor Casiza for the first time, so thank you. And Vice Mayor Lee and the rest of the council members. That's right, tonight, and I'm going to share my screen here. Let me see if I can do this. See if that works. So we touched on, we're going to talk tonight about Senate Bill 9, which is a much discussed and housing, it's a housing legislation that will go into effect on January 1st, 2022. We touched on this bill back in the Town Council's November, I think it was November 12th or early November council meeting, where we were talking about objective design and development standards and the council introduced an ordinance at that time. And we noted during that meeting that we were at sort of the tail end of a two-year process with the objective design standards. Down comes the, the new state legislation. We did what we could to sort of put in place some objective design standards that would apply to housing development projects under, that, that would be under SB 9. But that we would likely come back to you at some point in the near, relatively near future and talk again about potentially some additional modifications. Fast forward a month or so and we've been sort of looking around the landscape of what's going on and what's happening with other jurisdictions related to SB 9. I've been talking to my colleagues, other planning directors in Marin County and elsewhere. And we thought it was really a good time to check in, not so much, we'll, we'll talk about the actual regulations, but that we might want to put into, into place, but really to focus on, on really the process and procedures that you'd like staff to follow in the coming, maybe weeks and months related to this bill. And so what we're asking for tonight is some direction from you on whether, basically a couple of different options here. Whether we sort of move forward as we had discussed in November with updating our regulations related to SB 9 projects through a regular ordinance adoption process, which essentially starts with the planning commission and moves forward to the town council. Then there's two readings at the town council and then a 30-day period for an effective date of that legislation. Similar to actually what's going to happen with the, the public hearing tonight regarding veterinary offices. Or whether we come back to you sooner than that with an urgency ordinance that really puts in place some temporary regulations related to projects and housing developed or proposed, I should say, under SB 9, Senate Bill 9, after, again, January 1st, 2022. And so we've, we're putting this second option here, at least on this slide on the table. Just we've, we've noted that some other jurisdictions have done that in the county, Larkspur and San Anselmo. Others are considering it, haven't done so yet. I think maybe Nevada has, as of this week or last week. Other jurisdictions in the county, there's, there's sort of a spectrum, aren't going forward with that approach in terms of urgency ordinance. Others intend to do so, but will do so maybe in the first couple of months of, of the new year while they work on more permanent regulations. So that's really what we're looking for tonight, just to make that abundantly clear. We, we have some other sort of direction in terms of the regulations that we, we are thinking about as staff. But first and foremost, this is the direction we're seeking. And then you can also welcome to hear your comments on specific regulations that we might come back to you with, either through regular ordinance adoption process or an urgency ordinance process. I am going to just touch on, we touched on it last, again, in November, but speak more directly a little bit about SB 9. And really, this is a, a sort of a significant piece of legislation in that it affects single-family zoning in Corder Madera. And that's the sort of the vast majority of our land in Corder Madera is devoted to single-family zoning districts. So very basic, I'm going to go over the basics of it, happy to answer questions if you have any questions about the, the legislation by the state. But it requires, most importantly, ministerial approval, no design review, no discretionary approvals for a two-unit housing development on any single-family residential parcel. And for splitting a single-family residential lot into two lots and creating basically two parcels from which there was one before. And again, this applies to, I just mentioned, single-family residentially zoned properties within Corder Madera. We are considered an urbanized area. There are some exceptions, I'm not going to get into all of those. But essentially here's the zoning map of the town. Not supposed to read, but just as long as you can see the colors, I think that's what's important here. It applies to everywhere that's in this beige color, which you can see both on the Bayside and West Side of Corder Madera and all the yellow, the bright yellow color as well. So those are all the lots where this ordinance would apply, assuming that they're not, the lots in these areas aren't smaller than like 2,400 square feet, which I think we, we have 99.9% of our lots are, are larger than that in our single-family zoning district. And so basically, the law allows, sorry, so this is, this is our current regulations, what's allowed. And we've been through the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So today, someone can, you know, has a, can build a primary house and they can have an accessory dwelling unit. today, someone can, you know, has a, can build a, a primary house and they can have an accessory dwelling unit that we have some maximums on that, a thousand square feet for a two-bedroom unit. And then there's a, essentially, you're also allowed to have a junior accessory dwelling unit within your existing structure up to five hundred square feet. What this SB nine does, without being, without subdividing your lot, you're allowed to build two dwelling units on your lot, a minimum of eight hundred square feet each. And if you have an existing single-family home, you're allowed to add an additional dwelling unit, which is that at least eight hundred square feet. There, there's some ambiguity, and I think I'm mentioning this because there's still, this is important just to note that this is still being interpreted by legal, legal scholars and about what the law actually allows you to do. I've heard some interpretations that say you gotta have your existing single-family home and you're allowed to add up to two new additional units on your single-family lot as well. I've seen other interpretations just saying, no, in total, it's two units. So and, and then there's also unclear whether those other units can, can build as well accessory dwelling units and J U. So that's a big piece of this that's still, you know, staff, we've heard different things going on or interpretations about what is really allowed there. But certainly, this is a little bit clearer. The lot split allows you to split your lot and build two new homes on each of the, of the lots that are created under that lot split provision. And those can be duplexes. So a total of essentially four units can be built through an urban lot split. Again, and these have to be approved ministerially, no design review and whatnot. They, we can apply objective standards, and that's what we started to do and have some of those standards in place starting January seventh, as a result of the objective design and development standards ordinance that was introduced and adopted at the council's last meeting. This is a graphic. I'm not gonna go into this necessarily unless there's questions, but there are starting to be some information available on ABA's website and elsewhere, just to try to graphically show what can be done. And this is really speaking to the objective design and development standards. This is what we put into place and will become effective on January seventh. Some, this is our existing zoning, objective standards and our existing zoning. This will go into effect on January seventh. So some modification to the form, the character of what can actually be built pursuant to SB nine. For example, a maximum of twenty-two feet height to the eve before the roof, the roof could go up to thirty feet. There's some other development standards as well related to parking that we've included. And then there's other requirements that are not shown on the slide. And I'm gonna stay there, that relate to landscaping. They would require to have certain like dark sky compliant lighting, fence requirements. Some privacy-related requirements, objective standards related to privacy were included in the T three edge neighborhood zone that was adopted will become effective January seventh. So there, we started moving towards regulating these ministerial projects and, and that could be submitted to the, the town and the planning department next year. So that is really what we're, again, some of the things, this is a slide now thinking about the future and what we might propose and consider and have been considering as staff since the objective, you know, the November, basically, and, and listening to some colleagues and, and having some discussions about this. What we might start to consider as a potential ordinance moving forward. Certainly, there's things that we could control further than we have already to this point. Things like height, maximum, maximum size of a unit built pursuant to Senate Bill nine. Certain allowances of, of, for building in the floodplain. Certain access requirements for fire sort of access requirements that are actually already part of the building code, but just makes, making those explicit. This is something that this access requirement, it's something that Larkspur adopted in their urgency ordinance, but it comes from the fire code. And so being consistent, given that we're sharing fire department services, seems, we talked to Ruben about this, seems like a good way, direction to go there. But I think one of the things we, we want to do when we're thinking about new regulations or how to potentially regulate further these SB nine projects is that we are attempting to strike a balance that, that limit potential impacts to neighboring properties. But of course, not precluding the legislation from being utilized or not being contrary to actually the intent of the legislation, which certainly is something that is, is a delicate balance, but something that we've done, I think, in adopting accessory dwelling unit regulations in the past and something that we could also do with regards to development under SB nine. So let's see, with that, I'll just go back to really the direction we're looking for from the council tonight. I'll, I'll stop my presentation there, open it up for some questions. And hopefully, we can do our best in answering any questions we, we've you, you may have. We have included as attachments the, the text of the legislation to your staff report, text of the legislation itself. And the, I think we also have the November sixteenth, it was the town council staff report, which was the introduction for the objective design and development standards. And what else? Oh, and, and certainly also the, the, some of the excerpts that talk about the actual standards that would apply as of January seventh with the odds ordinance to projects under SB nine. That'll end my presentation and happy to answer any questions you may have. And leave it back to you, Mayor Casita.
Fred, you're muted.
You're unmuted, Fred. Oops. Does anybody from the council have any questions about him? Uh, let's start with Eli. I think he had his hand up first.
Charles will first, actually. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Charles, go ahead.
Yeah, so Adam, up to this point, for this particular legislation, we have not had any recommendation or discussion at the planning commission level. Okay, and, but the planning commission helped. So there were, there are commissioners that worked on the objective design standards for overall.
Yes, absolutely. And, and certainly they are aware of the legislation, but no, we haven't had any sort of discussion regarding recommendations. But certainly, they were part of the objective design and development standards work and have the same information regarding the adoption of regulations that would apply to SB nine projects through that process.
Thank you.
You're muted, Fred.
Muted, Fred.
Stop doing that. Adam, can you remove the, your presentation just?
Of course.
And with that, we'll go ahead and go to Eli. Thank you.
Great. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Adam. My first question was gonna be how many units you can build on a property under SB nine, because I read the staff report, read SB nine and couldn't figure it out. So I'm glad to see from your presentation that I wasn't missing anything. It's just not there. That's incredibly unhelpful. Love when the state passes super vague legislation. The question that I do still have, that was on the page, I think, two of your staff report. It says here, a local agency can deny a proposed two-unit or subdivision project under SB nine only if the building official makes a written finding based on a preponderance of evidence that the proposed project would have a specific adverse impact upon public health and safety or the physical environment. And then you know that that's a very high standard for folks to meet. So it sounds like, you know, don't get your hopes up. But I was just curious, this preponderance of evidence, just, just for curious reasons on the line, what, what does or doesn't that look like? Are you able to just kind of like illustrate a little bit?
Well, I'm gonna need Amy's help here, but it is a legal term, and I think intentionally so. So Amy.
I, I think my, my primary question is like traffic is, you know, is, is a concern about the traffic impact that's substantiated by a traffic study is does that come into play here? Or is that, does that not rise to the level?
I mean, I can tell you, preponderance of the evidence is a legal standard, which means more likely than not. So you refer to it as a fifty-one percent case. As far as what is actually going to hit that level, there's no legislative history on this. There's no regulation that gives us examples of this. So we're, we're kind of left with no guidance about what meets that standard. I suspect eventually there'll be some guidance. But it's, it's vague.
Yeah, and I think that what I, what we've been hearing is really the guidance is gonna come from a lawsuit at some point, probably, but I would, you know, a traffic analysis is, is, is a, I would say is unlikely to meet that test because you'd have to prove that the addition of this unit led to specifically that unit led, was causing some specific public health or safety issue, impact that could not be mitigated. And it's very difficult to tie one specific unit's traffic patterns to that, you know, to that standard, I would say. Especially when we've, you know, we have traffic analyses frequently that we, we do for development projects that obviously come up with, you know, there aren't always impacts, those impacts are well, there's frequently not impacts. But anyways, there, it's, it's, I would just leave it as, I think that would be a challenging one. Challenge case to me.
Hey Eli, I'm sorry. Hey Rebecca, can you bring over Chris, our building official? Because I don't know if he wants to shed some more light on this. And he has his hand up.
Well, and the only other thing I would say about this, this is the first time the state has ever put a building official in that position that I can recall. It's usually not, it's, it's usually other officials as well. So it's, it's a little, it's not dissimilar, this, this language frankly, to the ADU legislation. It is, there are some distinct differences. One being that this does call out the building official. It's unclear exactly why. We're looking for guidance on that. And so anyways, it's just an interesting sort of language to put in there that we haven't really seen before in, in the housing legislation world.
Hey Chris, did you want to chime in on this?
Sure. Thank you. Um, yeah, the preponderance of evidence from the research I did with clear and convincing written facts showing that the proposal for the ADUs, if it had, you know, an effect on public health and safety or the environment, and from the research I've done so far, considering Cordera, our floodplain, hillside developments, you know, the infrastructure, what impact would it have? So it sounds like it would be some very clear direction that this is not, you know, good for the public health or safety with the, either the future occupants or the infrastructure in the community. So we would have to see.
Thank you, Chris. And, and just to close out my question, because I think that kind of hit at like the, the second thing I wanted to talk about, other than parking was disaster zones, right? The vast majority of Cordera's single-family zones are in either flood or fire zones. And it, it seems to me like, you know, continuing to build there and putting new dwellings in, in those zones is, uh, you know, is a public safety risk, if not now, then in the future. So anyway, I, I'll leave it at that. I'm glad to see that you guys are clearly wrestling with this and, and it sounds like this is all kind of up in the air. So you've answered my question. Thank you.
Thanks, Eli. Let's go to Charles and then Bob.
I think Bob raised his hand. I'll, but basically, I think, yeah, okay, I'll let courtesy, I've already asked one, so I'd like Bob to speak.
Go ahead, Bob.
Oh, geez, thanks. Well, I'll just follow up on Eli's question. And Amy, you and I spoke briefly about this today, but it's a similar thing. On the issue of fire and fire safety, you know, we have a limit on units on Christmas Tree Hill, which has been in place for years. This is basically gonna override that, and there is nothing we can do about that, right? I mean, this is gonna allow unlimited density in areas like that. Is that the correct interpretation of this? And there doesn't seem to be anything we can do about this. Thanks.
I, I, under the SB nine, it ex, it exempts properties within very high fire severity zones or high or very high fire hazard severity zones unless those sites have adopted fire hazard mitigation measures pursuant to existing building standards. So the, basically, the legislature has said, as long as you've got the appropriate building standards and fire hazard mitigation, the fact that the property is located in a very high fire zone is, does not exclude it from SB nine. We are seeing some jurisdictions taking, you know, some pretty aggressive moves on this. I think Santa Barbara is doing so. I, when I looked at their actual legislation, they actually did an amendment at council, which made it slightly less aggressive than the press reports. But, you know, we are watching everyone and I suspect they will get sued and we'll see what the court does with it. So I mean, one thing I do want to emphasize is we're in the very, very early days of this and, you know, we're gonna be watching what other jurisdictions do. And, you know, they will eventually be sued and, and we'll start to get a better understanding of this. But yes, I think as it stands now, the legislature says, as long as you're up with fire mitigation standards in your building codes, we're not gonna, you know, you're not gonna be able to say that you can blank, just a blanket blocking of that. Now, as we just discussed, it may be that there are individual parcels where we can make that finding that it's a hazard to fire and safety. I mean, there is that that option. It's not gonna be an easy one, but it's going to have to be on a case-by-case basis. Right now, you know, just blanketly prohibiting it, you know, is, is likely to conflict with the state law and, you know, is likely, the court is likely going to find that, but we'll watch, we'll see.
So theoretically, if I had a lot on Summit on the highest part, I could take it, split it and put two duplexes on it.
Yes.
Over the counter.
Over the counter.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Charles?
So Adam, this might be something that I didn't understand, but is there a owner, so does an owner have to live in the unit before or after for a certain amount of time? And I'm very curious if it's after, how that would even be enforced. So ultimately, like, it, was there some tenant of the SB nine about that, about a three-year tenure or something?
Yeah, also wanted, there is an exception. If you, if somebody has been a, a tenant in a structure, then it actually, you can't use SB nine basically that to remove that tenant. So it doesn't apply for that within the last three years. But yeah, there's been a lot of, my understanding is this was a, a very intense part of the legislation, legislative process. And my understanding now, and, and there is still some interpretation on this, but the provision applies to urban, if you're doing an urban lot split, then you do have to sign an affidavit that says you intend to live in one of the units for the next, at least the next three years. Now, the word intend is, you know, was pointed out as a pretty weak sort of requirement. I mean, you, you, it doesn't take much to say you intend to do something and then change your mind a little bit later. So you know, so I, I think the answer is no, there isn't really a requirement now. And, and I think that was, there was a bunch of lobbying through the legislative process on because it opens it up to speculation and.
Yeah, so right, exactly. So they're saving face, but it still could be that. But ultimately, we have ordinances and the ability to find and monitor that. So as an objective standard, can you say if you violate the affidavit, a signed affidavit, there's a penalty and the town can collect on it. I'm just asking, you know, I don't want to get
No, I get you.
How do we enforce any of that? And like, does this is a state? And so ultimately, is it just more words?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I mean, I think the point is the legislation itself leaves a big opening there and a loophole to not have to actually live there.
Right, which is the big problem, because I think that you would see appropriate execution of SB nine if you had homeowners doing it and it was appropriate in the neighborhood and they were going to live with the neighbors after the fact. And that's what it's trying to say. And people get the safeguard. But what you just said is that it's not enforceable. And so then ultimately, you could have let's say, an unscrupulous money, you know, money developer that basically builds four units and then just walks away and could care less how it affects the neighborhood. But, you know, SB nine disguises like the language, the way you described, is that they're disguising the idea that it's still a neighborhood friendly unit building thing, but it it's exploitable. And so ultimately, objective standards for protecting the community, I would just like to understand as it evolves, what our protections are about that, because I think it's a good protection.
Yeah, and I, and I, you know, I think there's some who would say the real goal here is is to allow for additional density in single family neighborhoods. We need the housing. That's what the whole purpose is really for, whether somebody lives there or not. And then the other side would say, you know, I'm just saying, this is, this is the debate that I heard through the legislative process. And then others said, no, they, we don't want to open this to speculators. And then others would say, well, we don't, it doesn't, that's not the point. It be speculators or not. So but I absolutely, I think we're we're always looking at how can our subjective criteria that we use can be, how can we turn those into really objective criteria to get the same sorts of results to the extent we can, you know, when development happens? So if you're gonna, I mean, similar to, that's where the objective design and development standard did try to and and did does have privacy standards that are required, whether they are going to actually, it's hard to write a privacy standard that's going to work for every single lot, however. And so you may get some development that meets the standards, but doesn't address a neighbor neighbor's true privacy concerns.
Right, I have one more legal question for Amy. I'm sorry. So ultimately, if there's a legislature that allows development that has actual impact on valuations of properties adjacent that are really detrimental, does that lead either the, you know, you know, officials, town, state, or or even the developer, open to, you know, lawsuits in the future to recoup those losses from, you know, unwarranted kind of impacts to the neighborhood or the neighbors? Is there is there legal precedent for that in most, you know, law and and property ownership?
You know, that's a, it's a different, difficult question to answer, because we haven't seen how this has played out. And I think that, you know, I think there's if you're, if you're, whatever you're building is compliant with the law. And there are some standards here, and there will be objective design standards. I think it's going to be it, it will be challenging for someone to bring a lawsuit, but not impossible. And I think, I think the answer is we're just going to have to see in the future what happens with this.
So, but it, so I keep hearing that it's only going to be resolved in the courts through lawsuits. There's no kind of question, there's no kind of getting interpretations ahead of the, ahead of time on applications to try to avoid basically expensive litigation and unknowns with that.
Charles, I'm sorry, we may be getting off track a little because I think some of these legal issues, they may need to be taken offline because I think these things, they're not, it hasn't gone before the court. And I think some of these, Amy, correct me if wrong, they're not going to be resolved until somebody actually files a lawsuit. I just want to make sure we stay on track to what we need.
That is, so I'm going to interrupt, Mayor. I think it is on track because I'm telling you that it ultimately, if you're telling me none of this matters and it's all going to turn into a lawsuit, why are we even talking about any of it? Why don't you just leave the law alone? Let it be a state legislation and and we have no control like. So my frustration is ultimately, you keep telling me we have no control, we have no say. We can maybe protect it with ordinances that, you know, that are or objective design standards, fine. But those aren't even clear what the what the actual how many units and how they might be stacked against each other and stuff. So like, it's hard for me to say, yeah, sure, go do all these things. And, you know, we haven't had the planning commission who's looked at that, give recommendations. So I lack a total amount of information to make a decision. And I also feel like we'd be at risk by doing an emergency ordinance as it's explained. So I need more information to make decisions. And I'm telling you, until those, I'm not off subject. I usually have a really clear guidance and and understanding about what to do. And I still don't on this one. So Fred, I need, you know, I needed to talk about it. So.
And I think I I understand your frustration. I think a lot of us are frustrated with the same type thing as far as taking local control out of local jurisdiction and having law passed that there's no details in it. It's just, here's this high level law and then go figure it out. And yeah, if something happens, let the court figure it out. But meanwhile, we're stuck holding the bag, trying to figure out, like I'm saying, what protections can we have if we can have any? I'm sorry, Adam, go ahead.
No, I'm just going to say in in vice mayorly that, you know, that that would be consistent, I think, with sort of our original plan to sort of go through the normal ordinance adoption process where we wait, play it out a little bit longer, see how this shakes out, see if we can get more guidance from the state, its housing and community development. Then take, you know, once we get some of that, take an ordinance to the planning commission for 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 guidance and their recommendation to the town council and do it that way. So that would be, I I think that was maybe, you know, a little bit more slowing, slow playing it a little bit. It's it's sounds like an op, it's definitely an option as well.
Thank you. That that's answering my questions and and understanding what maybe be a little confusion in my dialogue, which doesn't usually happen.
That's okay. Thanks, Charles. I appreciate all your comments. I have a couple of questions for you. One tag along that Bob said he was mentioning Summit, but that situation can happen anywhere in town, right? If I'm on the east side and I have a five thousand or six thousand square foot lot or four thousand, I can split that lot and go build two units without going through any planning over the counter. So it's it's anywhere in town, basically, correct?
Yeah, any in those areas that I showed on the map in those colors. Yeah, any, any of our single family housing.
Okay, you may have mentioned it in your staff report. Can we require any portion of that housing to be affordable? Or is it something?
Yeah, and that's a really good question. And first off, let me, let me thank Martha Vitale for helping with the staff report. And put it helping put that together. As with all of my housing, our housing work, she's a key part of that. So I wanted to recognize her. But, but that's an interesting question, because I think at some point the question becomes by requiring affordability at certain deed restricted levels, which is what a true affordability means, you know, it it it's unclear whether or not that stifles actually the development of housing pursuant to the bill. Because of basically the inability to make the numbers work or the economics work. So it's it's the question, we've seen some ordinances propose that. And my own personal feeling is that in in and is that it's unlikely if you do deed restrict the affordability, sorry, the units to certain maximum rent incomes or rental, yeah, sorry, rent rates. Then you you depending on what it's set at, you may preclude actually somebody from taking advantage of that. It's something we could explore more and try to better understand. But I know dealing with larger projects, how challenging it can be for even larger scale developers to make the affordability work when it's not directly subsidized by other, other streams of revenue. So it's it's a, it's it's a, it's a challenging, it's a good question and a challenging one. And also, I would say that gets to another question of of then enforcing and and monitoring and regulating those those rental rates as well, which is, which is frankly, a a challenge, just on a staff level, having disparate and different sort of agreements between individual property owners requiring this unit affordability.
All right, thanks. And Leah, you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a quick question about sort of notice to the neighbors. I know, you know, normally when someone's doing a big project, we ask them that, you know, outreach to the neighbors right away. And I just wonder how that applies in these cases.
Yeah, you know, there's no current requirement. That's certainly something that we would put in any ordinance that we brought forth, a very explicit ordinance. There's currently no ordinance that requires that. But that is certainly in the, an objective or procedural thing that could could be attached to any ordinance that we adopt. And certainly, we can probably figure out ways to do that, even if something happened. You know, today. Or sorry, January first.
All right. Does anybody ever have any other questions, Amber, to take it off to public comment? Okay, with that, is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on this topic? And I don't see any hands raised. Rebecca, did you get any emails in regarding this?
No, America, so we did not receive any email public comments, but I am now noticing that Pat Raffazio is, has a raised hand.
Yeah, if you can bring her over.
Yes. My timer, okay, got my timer back.
Thank you.
Okay, Pat, are you able to unmute?
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I have, I have brought this up before, and I just want to keep it at top of mind that Susan Kirsh of Mill Valley is working to take the state legislature to court over this usurpation of local control, which is pretty much strictly forbidden in the constitution, as those who have looked into it have said. So I know it's a long shot, but if Corder Madera could just somehow get its voice behind it, if not some real support of lawyer's time or or whatever to help make this happen. It is growing. She does have several cities behind her now. So let me know if you would like more specifics and a link to her or a contact from her. But it's a real opportunity for Corder Madera to speak up and and say what you're all saying, which is this is ridiculous, and they should not be able to usurp our local control this way. So hope you'll consider it. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Pat. And I don't see any other hands raised. So we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to, oh, I'm sorry, we have one more. If you can bring Phyllis over, Rebecca, thanks.
Yes, I just wanted to add, in addition to what Pat said, there is an initiative to go on the ballot in November two oh two two, I have sent a copy to Adam. And this initiative essentially says that the state cannot usurp local control. So right now they are collecting signatures. The AG's office has approved the language. And I hope you will look it up, look for people distributing it, and please sign it. I think it would really help if the people in this state had a chance to vote on whether or not they want the state dictating what we do locally. So thank you.
Thanks, Phyllis. Appreciate the comments and the awareness on that. With that, I, no other hands are raised. I will go ahead and bring it back to town council for discussion. And Adam, correct me if wrong, you're looking for for direction from us either to do, do an emergency ordinance with some of the recommendations you made, or to to hold off and do a full ordinance sometime early next year, I want to say. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah.
And with that, Charles, do you want to lead us off? You had some great comments before.
Yeah, I mean, I like, ultimately, my questions led to what I feel Adam was satisfying with me. I am drawn to doing the long term ordinance at risk of basically having early applicants explore the process with us without clear definition, in understanding that we could get to a clearer definition and feel good about approving something. I have seen emergency ordinances in the past for marijuana permits and stuff, and it was, it was effective in that. But I think this is much different. This is, and and the state actually allowed a process of us to kind of explore that and how it shook out. I think this one's a much bigger issue. It's more litigious. And I think it's really untouchable at this point, from my standpoint, I feel like any, you know, but I think it needs a lot of discussion because of its ambiguity. And so to do these quick patches aren't going to still protect, like, you know, it'll just stop someone from having a couple of windows on the side of their house, but they're still going to build four houses next to you either way. So like, you know, I think we need to really investigate further how we make this best for the community. And I felt like with the overall design objective, you know, objective designs that we passed for all, you know, buildings and then the process that we've initiated with the public about home key and, you know, the housing element with seven meetings with the neighbors. It's like, ultimately, we're held to seven hundred units, but we're figuring out who's who who's involved, what we want, how to do it. And there's been no dialogue like that. And and so that's where I'm really scared. And I don't even know how my constituents feel because there hasn't been any education. So like, to just put it on me individually, I think, or even the council, I think that's unfair. So, you know, punting is the right thing to do. Unfortunately, it's wrong for all of our residents. But, you know, at the same time, we didn't do this to them. And you need, you know, if you really want, feel, you know, when it really blows up, it's going to go back to the people that have done this to us. So, you know, keeping our hands clean of it is probably and I want to do that. I don't want to like dig into it, dig my feet in, because could mean beautiful things. I'm often surprised, you know, by that stuff. So I'm not creating a dialogue that stops it. I just when I thought about it for my own property and what it would do to my neighbors and what this community means to me, even if I could make five million dollars, I wouldn't do it. So like, if you ask me, like, that, that's how I feel, but I can't legislate against that. So there you go, you know, just let it, let it fly until it, until somebody else is bigger and better than us can step up and put the money and make them really earn it if they're going to do that to us. So there, that's my, those are my words.
All right. No, thanks. Great comments. And it looks like you're supporting just holding off. No, no urgency.
No emergency. I'd like Adam to explore a true ordinance that explores all our options to protect and safeguard and follow SB nine. You know, the community, but also follow what we understand as the legislation SB nine. So.
All right, thanks. Who else? Yeah, Bob.
What's the risk of not doing the urgency ordinance and waiting to do something like that? Versus another option, which is not in here, which is do both. Other than it's a hell of a lot of work for staff, unfortunately, but go ahead with the urgency ordinance, get that rolling, and then do something more substantial later on. So it's a question for Adam, I guess.
Well, I'll take your first one. So I don't know if risk is the right word, but it's certainly applicants starting January first, well, it's actually going to be January third, I guess, of twenty twenty two could submit applications and they would just be subject to the regulations that are in effect, are objective standards essentially, that are in effect at that time. And and so I don't know how else to say it. I mean, it's hard to go through and list every objective standard, but it's
So Adam, is there a checklist like the ADUs ultimately at a ministerial level? Do you really have an understanding of what you would, what you could approve and what you couldn't? Or are you going to kind of have to?
We're going to have to make, we're going to have to
So that, in itself, is quite a risk.
We have, well, certainly, no, we have, there are, there are procedural requirements we have to adhere to as well from the state in terms of how long we have to approve something. But certainly, one big step towards that was adopting the objective designs and development standards that will go in on the seventh. So I'll assume that we're, you know, I, you know, if somebody drops something before that, we're going to have to go by our existing regulations. After the seventh, we'll have a very clear, at least a location for all of our objective standards that would apply to anybody who is building pursuant to SB9. There are a lot of things in there that we're going to have to, you're right, I mean, go through and make sure that all the objective standards are being met. Even if they are not, however, the state law says you can build at least an 800 square foot unit and essentially waive whatever you need to waive in order to at least build two 800 square foot units on each of the lots you do, and the lot split scenario, and then two units on the, on the non-lot split scenario at least. So.
But it's, with those units, like the ADU, it's actually a cheaper process, right? The permit's reduced and like the requirements of how you define ADU, a full unit is you have to have full kitchens, full bathrooms, you have to pay the full fees. I mean, what's the difference, right? If it's just not a lot split, let's just say it's just building two units of 800 square feet.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's our current regulations and the ones that would be adopted or in effect January 7th, they would not limit the size to 800 square feet. I'll put it that way. It would be, you'd be able to do as much floor area as that lot would allow pursuant to our existing rules, which I can't go over here. It's a sliding scale depending on the size of your lot. If you have a small lot, you get .6 FAR, if you know, you know, so it, but typically, you're, you're around 26 to 3,000 square feet of floor area you're allowed to build on a single-family lot, sometimes more if you go on to a second story and whatnot. So and that might be under, maybe, I don't know, 30.
Right. But so what you're saying is the emergency ordinance has wording that could, at least in the interim, until we understand what the finalized ordinance would be, an 800 square foot kind of limit until we really determine how to do that correctly. And, and Amy, you feel like that's legally defensible as a, as an objective design standard as presented by staff?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the, the reason why we would do an interim is just to cover that period before we have a chance to go through and, and really think it out and do the thoughtfulness. And the interim, you know, we would, there are some standards in SB9 that will apply regardless of if we pass an ordinance or not. But we could address, you know, some of the major, you know, protections that we, we think are available to put in and, and maybe fill in some gaps on if there's any objective design standards that we think would apply, you know, to some of this stuff. But that would be the point of doing the interim is just to fill the gap in time. We would always do the longer term ordinance, you know, but the question is whether you want something in between.
Like, so pull the mandate off immediately or, or just slowly string this along until everybody finds out that this is a tortured process. I'm sorry, I've just gone through it before on the planning commission and sorry, sorry, Bob.
Bob, I don't know if you got your question answered about if we could do the emergency one and then do the emergency and then later come up with a full-blown one.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And to, and to be clear, Charles, it's not just the unit size, it's also the height, it's also access. I mean, it's a couple of different things that we can impose some kind of control on, which might blow up, but at least we're doing something in the interim to, you know, make this a little bit more palatable.
Yeah.
Right now, it's just, it's like all hands are off, and you can just, if you get in there on January 3rd with the right application, you can do anything you want under SB9. And we need, this, this is going to allow us to put some kind of control over it. So I think passing this and moving forward with it would make sense. Hey, Lea, I mean, it's, it's not going to solve it, but.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks. That's a great question.
Lea, go ahead. I think you wanted to say something.
Thanks. Yeah, I was just going to say, I don't really see the downside of proceeding with an urgency ordinance. We can always do regular ordinance later. You know, obviously, we want to abide by state law, but to the extent it allows us to impose, you know, exercise as much control as we can to make sure any of these projects, you know, fit with the character and the existing community, I think we might as well do it. So I, I'm, that would be my position.
Thanks. Eli?
Yeah, thank you. I, you know, I, I agree. I, I think, I think I would lean towards just putting our foot through the door right now and making sure that we've got at least something on the books when January 3rd rolls around, but I definitely also understand Charles' concerns and, and share, you know, share the, the idea that we want to make sure that we get something that's well crafted, thoughtfully crafted on the books and that we do it right. Which is why I was really intrigued by Bob's suggestion. What if we do both? I'm, my only question, like Bob mentioned, is just staff time. I know we just adopted a really beefy work plan, and you guys are in the, like, just ramping up the housing element right now. So I, you know, I don't, I don't want to like sign you guys up for more than you got the bandwidth for. And I think with that framework, I'd probably, like I said, just want to get my foot in the door right now. And then on the actual substance of, of the restrictions themselves, I would totally support all the staff recommendations in the staff report.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, and I think I'm kind of along the same lines where I can see doing the emergency ordinance so that we get some protections in place, whether they're good, bad, or indifferent, as far as if somebody's going to, you know, come after us for whatever reason. But at least we have something in place that puts some stopgap measures in place, and then looking at the longer-term ordinance part of it. I would like to see if we go to a longer-term ordinance, if you can do the research and figure out if we can get affordability in there somehow. If that is possible. I just think it seems like a lot of this housing, it's for affordability, and in this law, it doesn't seem like it's geared towards that. I'm sorry, Eli, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to, I appreciate you bringing that up multiple times because I think that is key. And, you know, even with ADUs and stuff, I'm always a little bit leery of the idea of affordability by designs, you know, just saying that these units are small, so they're, they'll command a smaller rent, yes, but they're also small, so they can hold, you know, they can't hold a family. So, you know, I, I, I don't know that I'm sold on, on that whole concept of, of affordable by design, and, and I'm really interested in, in us being able to come back in the future and look at not just for SB9 units or ADUs, which I can't vote on anyways, but just like it as a larger concept, I think it, it ties into the stuff we've been talking about with equity, which I know was another big priority for us in this work plan. And, and I think making sure that we're, you know, doing a little bit more than we have historically to guarantee affordable housing for our residents, I think that's key. So I just wanted to say, Fred, I agree, and thank you.
Okay, thanks. So one, one more question I have, and that is if, it sounds like the director moving, let me know if everybody's kind of in agreement, is to go ahead and do an urgency ordinance and then have staff work on a full ordinance down the road, early first part of next year, Adam Smalling going, yeah, another thing on my plate.
That was always the intent, actually. I'm sorry if that wasn't clear in our, in our slide, but certainly, yes.
But so one other question, though, is that we're not meeting, I think, January 4th. I think we, it's a second, it's, if it's further in January, that give us any exposure between, again, I'm splitting hairs here, between January 1st and when we meet next to get that urgency ordinance in place? And is that urgency ordinance, is that effective the night we approve it, or do we have to cycle through another meeting?
Amy, you want to take that?
I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, I believe the interim ordinance will be effective. Don't quote me on that, but I believe that's correct. I mean, there, there will be a gap in time.
Okay.
And I, and there isn't any way to, to really address that. I don't anticipate, I don't think jurisdictions have been anticipating being flooded with these requests. We, there are standards in SB9, there are the objective design, so it's not like there, there are no protections at this point.
Okay. Is that gap just a two-week period, or would it be like more two weeks or so till we vote on it? Or it comes up before us at the first meeting in January, which is the second meeting, because we're not meeting at the first meeting?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
Believe it goes into effect that night. If it does, then yeah, you're looking at two, the, the first two weeks of January before we're able to meet.
Okay.
You know, and I, you know, I know it's not, we're not the only jurisdiction grappling with this clearly. I just, just to, you know, and there, like I mentioned, you know, not, not that there's certainly, I don't want to make, paint the picture we have, be very open, you know, we've, we've had a lot of questions, I would say, I would say a medium amount of questions from homeowners about the law and the legislation. Certainly, we could receive applications within those two, two-week period. You know, but, you know, it's, it's not going to, we're not going to be the only jurisdiction that would be dealing with that. But yeah, so it, it's sort of, if, if you want to capture every single one, we'd have to go a different route and and have the urgency ordinance applied to every project. We'd have to figure out a way to do that the first week in January. Otherwise, we're, we're going to have those gaps.
Okay, no, that's fine. So just, just to circle back, we're all in agreement then that to move forward with the urgency ordinance and then move forward with the, the full-blown ordinance, right? Because we don't need a motion on this as far as I know. Okay, all right. Then Adam, you have your, I'm sorry.
Just, I just want to add, and to do it as soon as possible. Whatever we need to do or whatever Amy can do, we just need to, because there's going to be applications in January. They're coming.
Right. All right. So Adam, you're good? But you're good? All right. Thanks. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to 6D, discussion of possible action by the mayor to appoint council members that fill vacancies. Rebecca, do you would, just want to give an overview on this one, please?
Yes, this is a procedural item that happens annually, the meeting after the council reorganizes, where the mayor can, and the council revisits the current year's appointments to JPAs, standing committees, subcommittees for boards and commissioner views. All of those, those bodies to which the town appoints members of the council to serve on, to represent the, the town to those bodies. And again, this is done annually after the council reorganization. And since this is the last item on our agenda, and it's getting a little late, I want to not race through this so I can make sure that I mark these down correctly and that we get everything all the appointments made appropriately, particularly when you get down to the bottom for the board and commission interviews. I've got some, some vacancies, and I believe that as of tonight's action, we also need to add the climate action committee interviews to that list as well. So I want to make sure we get to that, too.
Okay. So with that, is there anybody on the town council that is overloaded? Anything that anybody wants to switch on, anything like that to that effect? Everybody good with their positions?
And then another thing to look at, America says, is whether or not anyone's current appointments conflict with any other appointments or any other personal commitments or something that would make it difficult to attend meetings over the course of the next year. It would be a good time to revisit that if that, if that is a concern for anyone.
Okay. Does anybody have any type of concern like that? No? Okay. The only thing that, that I'm going to change, and I talked to Eli about, and he's amendable to it, is that for Central Marine Police, I'm an alternate right now. Eli is a member. We're going to switch those two, so I'll go on as a member. And Eli will be an alter, alternate. And I appreciate Eli doing that. I have a special interest in law enforcement just because of my background, financial services, dealing with fraud, anti-money laundering, and I've dealt with law enforcement from an investigative standpoint, not the other side of it, for a number of years. I just have a special interest in my heart for it. So I appreciate Eli doing that for me, or switching that. I appreciate that. So Rebecca, do we need to go through, where we have vacancies down here? Go through that and also on for the climate committee, let me throw this one out first. Sorry. On the climate committee, we're looking for two town council members that would like to be doing the interviews and be part of that selection process. I assume, Eli, you want to do it? Okay. Is somebody else interested? Lea, would you like to do that, since I think you and Eli were the liaisons to that committee? Okay. Did you get that, Rebecca?
I, I believe so. And the liaisons to the committee are going to stay the same as well?
Correct. And then we, there's vacancies here for Rep. 2 Marine County Community Agents in Mosquito Vector District.
Yes, I, you, you may not need to have anyone interview for those, but I, it would be good to have two council members identified in case the need to do those interviews comes up during the year. The other option is for, I wanted to point out that for the very difficult to fill, Ren's Nova Mosquito Vector Abatement District, where it's been difficult to get a resident to apply for that seat, a council member can also be appointed to that seat if one is interested.
Okay, so let's do this first. For, for the Representative Marine County Committee on Aging, I don't mind taking one of those spots. Ari, Liza, liaison for age-friendly Corder Madera. And again, these sound like they're far and few between, and this is only for the interview.
Yes, council did appoint Matt Boland to serve the remainder of the vacant term. I believe there was one year that had been vacant for almost a year, so there's two years left on that term.
Okay, so this won't come up for another couple of years?
Most likely not.
Okay. So is there a second council member who would like to serve with me, just we fill these vacancies? Okay, Lea, do it. Thank you. Anybody want to take the mosquito? If not, we can defer it until that comes up, I assume, right, Rebecca?
Yes.
You're smiling. Okay, all right. So any other things on, on the commissions, committees, anything we need to cover?
Many council member wished to be appointed to the Mosquito and Vector Control District representative for the town of Corder Madera.
It's going fast. I think we'll hold off on that one. Okay, and we don't need a motion on this, correct? Okay, all right. Any other comments? I will go, go ahead and open up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public, would you speak on this topic? Did we get any emails in?
No, I see you did not receive any emails, public comments on this item.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment. I appreciate everybody for all the extra work that you're doing on all these different boards, commissions. I appreciate the extra time you're putting into it. So moving on to council reports, town manager report, Todd.
You might be on. The council, just, just real quickly, the staff offices, we close tomorrow, Wednesday, the 22nd, and we'll be back on Monday, January 3rd. We'll be completing some work behind closed doors, but also taking a little bit of a break. Our move to our, to our temporary lease space at Hunt Plaza is scheduled, the time we're on track. So thank you to RJ and his team and Public Works Engineering. It's January 18th. We'll start moving all of our staff over that, those couple of days, mid-January. And then we'll work with Mike Moriarty, our communications manager, to really to do a couple of open houses, get the community, let them know where we are, let them see our space and start having that face-to-face contact. But the plan is for staff to be fully operational mid-January over at Hunt Plaza. We're following COVID closely. The plan still is to have the option for council to decide if you want to do it for all of our boards and commissions to have public meetings in February. But again, we're just going to follow the next 30 days on that decision. And that's all I have at this point.
Thanks. And those in person, I mean, it would be a hybrid?
We have the hybrid capability.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Todd? No? Okay. Town council member reports. Eli, you want to start us off?
Sure, thank you. Just in the interest of time, I'm only going to report on my, my top priority thing that I wanted to share, which was, and Phyllis already touched on one of these, but ballot measures. We had a League of California Cities North Bay Division Executive Committee meeting. Charles was there as well. And part of the agenda packet was basically like a sneak peek at some of the potential ballot measures for 2022 that have either already, I think, possibly qualified or are still kind of just shaping up, but that the league is tracking. And a number of these are absolutely wild. Some of them are like a severe threat to cities. One I'm thinking of in particular, essentially, if it passed, it would nullify all sales taxes, like local sales taxes that have been passed by cities throughout California, and set up a, like, new, much stricter criteria that cities would have to go through all over again to pass sales taxes, to raise local revenue, to deliver services and projects for residents. It's kind of creepy because it's dressed up as, as like, you know, like a taxpayer protection, like tax cut thing. But really, what it does is it sets up more bureaucracy, more rules, more processes, more litigation all around, local sales taxes, and who ultimately pays for all of this litigation, the taxpayers. So I, I, that's one that I think we all need to be tracking carefully. I think it could be a huge threat to Corder Madera and cities all up and down the state if it passes. Another one, this is the one that Phyllis touched on, is on local land use. And I saw that Phyllis just emailed us all out, I think, the text of the initiative. So thank you, Phyllis. Um, another one, this is the one that Phyllis touched on, uh, is on local land use, and I saw that Phyllis just emailed us all out, I think the text of, uh, the initiative, so thank you, Phyllis. Um, I, I only have a little snippet here from, from my lead packet, but, you know, essentially it still said, basically what this, what this initiative, ballot initiative does if it passes is it says, whenever there's a conflict between local land use policies and state policies, the local policy prevails. So it, it essentially totally wipes out everything that the state has done on all land use stuff regarding taking away local control. You know, I, I think none of us are thrilled with, with most of the, the stuff that the state has done with regard, you know, SB nine, the law split thing, the ADU thing like this, that, you know. I, I think there's a, a ton of bills and I feel like the state has been kind of overstepping and I, and I, I, you know, I've been saying that I was worried that a backlash was coming, and I think it is coming. Uh, this is huge. I don't, I, I'm not gonna, you know, I, I don't know enough yet to know whether it's a good thing or a bad thing for Port of Madera, but I know it's huge. Uh, and I know that we should be taking it very seriously and, and tracking it closely. Um, the other two that I wanted to just draw attention to, one would basically, so, so as I understand it, you know, most, uh, most California, uh, property taxes were frozen in, God, I don't remember, it was like the seventies or something, I think Reagan was governor. Uh, you know, and, and there's certain things that will trigger your, your, you know, your property being reappraised, but, but a lot of us are paying property taxes at a rate that's reflected about the value of our property decades ago. If this ballot initiative passes, uh, this is initiative number twenty one dash oh, oh, three, two. It would reappraise everybody's property and everybody's paying market rate, uh, you know, taxes on, on the market value of their house right now. Which for a lot of people would be an astronomical increase. Um, the other thing that it does, which is interesting, is it, uh, it creates a surcharge, uh, for property taxes on properties worth more four million dollars, but then it puts that surcharge into a fund, which I think basically is used. Uh, again, I just have like a small snippet here, but it looks like that fund is then used to lower, you know, lower, uh, like lower income people's property taxes or fixed income people's property taxes. Um, so again, you know, all these things, I think we don't have enough information yet to really know, uh, the, the finer details, but, you know, if they pass, they're gonna be very wide ranging. Um, and then the last one that I wanted to draw attention to eliminates collective bargaining for teachers, police officers, nurses, firefighters and other public employees. Which, you know, I think would be a horrendous affront to, to a lot of these public servants. So anyways, those, those are the top four that I wanted to, to highlight for you guys. Um, it, you know, I, go ahead and shoot me an email if you want more information, I can send you what I have and I can send you the initiative number and then we can dig together and see what else we can find, but I just wanted to make sure that those things were on people's radars, because they are huge. Uh, that is all, thank you.
Thanks, Eli. Thanks for staying, uh, keep on on top of the state legislative items and statewide initiatives. Uh, Leela.
Thanks, uh, I just had, um, we had a home key cause of one, a meeting. Um, you were there too, Mayor Casissa, um, but the, uh, we're still proceeding with our introduction to Homeward Bound, that's gonna happen on January thirteenth um, at five thirty in the evening, so that will be a great way for the community to meet and get acquainted with Homeward Bound, who's gonna be operating the cause of one, once it reopens. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Uh, Bob?
Uh, yeah, we had a Marin Wildlife Prevention Association meeting. Uh, major thing that happened is we went through a very detailed plan to add, I think, three new staff members, which we desperately need in order to accomplish and get projects, more projects completed, because we've got money and we've got plans, but we're having a hard time getting them done, so we'll be adding those people soon. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles.
So I attended the Transportation Authority of Marin meeting, uh, this last week. And the Transportation Authority of Marin Board, uh, moved forward the Santa fell one oh one, five eighty northbound, um, options for, uh, further development to do the E I R. So there were, I think, seven total options. Some that maintained a fifty mile an hour connection that ran on the backside of, uh, the ridge between Larkspur and, um, Santa fell, and those were both, uh, removed from the options. So all the options are at thirty five miles or less, um, as far as the speed of transfer. Two of the options were sub shoots that, uh, stay in the general area that the current off ramp, uh, onto the main street there is, and then two other ones that were more exotic, um, that looked at basically not uh, affecting, uh, private property or buying rights or buying the land and, and, and affecting, uh, private property were explored at first and those were taken off the table as too expensive for the, um, for the project. So, uh, if you wanna see the four that were put forward, I, I think that, um, you know, the presentation is available online and, and I think that it'll affect us all. Um, there was a lot of good dialogue with the traffic engineers about the overall one oh one corridor and five eighty and, you know, what really are the traffic, um, issues and that this one isn't gonna fix it all. They, they talked a lot about the north metering, um, initiative that's gonna come online this next year and, um, other, uh, topics like that, um, which were really interesting and helped, uh, educate me more about our local, um, traffic issues. Um, the other thing is, is I did attend the meeting with Eli. The other concerning, uh, part, at least locally for us about the sales tax initiative was also the restrictions they put on local government as far as its ability to be proponents for sales tax initiatives in the future. That the only language and discussion that politicians like us, staff or anyone can talk about is nothing. You can only put the actual request into the voting, um, you know, register and, and, you know, get your two hundred and forty words and that's it, which, you know, I, to me, that was a overstep on my First Amendment rights, so good luck with that. But, um, I was really concerned with that one, it, you know, outside of the cost that it'll, by trying to revoke them, the fact that the communities would have to go back through the initiative, the cost alone adds up to, uh, you know, much more than the ability to challenge it, but the league was, you know, worried that it's gonna be quite expensive to, to fight it, so, um, you know, there was a lot of disconcerting dialogue, like, you know, I can't me personally, I couldn't believe that, you know, it was being talked at the highest levels of one of the most populous states, honestly. It was just, um, really sad, honestly, but, um, you know, I'll leave it at that. Merry Christmas.
And it's being backed by the California Business Roundtable, which is an extremely powerful lobby.
All right, thanks, Charles. Uh, for me, again, I just attend the home key meeting like Leela, uh, mentioned, and again, like she mentioned, January thirteenth, we're gonna have another community meeting to introduce homework bound. That's all I had. Does anybody for number eight A, does anybody have any changes or anything like to add to the agenda for our next meeting? Which is not till January eighteenth, uh, January fourth meeting is actually canceled. Uh, do just, if you do, just let me know. And if there's no further business coming for the town council, I will adjourn the meeting and we're at seven thirty one, so we ran one minute over. Um, and happy holidays to everybody. I hope everybody has a great New Year's also.
Happy holidays.
See you guys.
Bye.
Thank you, Fred. Great job tonight.
Thanks.